All set?
Yes.
I'll introduce.
I'll pre-.
It's the gavel. Oh, there it is.
Oh, okay. You already took copies.
I'd like to open the meeting, the Board of Selectmen, for December tenth, special meeting to interview the four finalists for Town Administrator. Can we open the meeting and begin in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first candidate is Alan Chaka. Alan's been Town Administrator in Rockland since two thousand and eight. He previously served as a selectman in Bridgewater from two thousand and two to two thousand and five, and as state representative for Bridgewater from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-four. Mr. Chaka has engaged in a variety of private sector employment activities. He holds an MPA degree from Bridgewater State University and a BS degree in government from Suffolk University. Welcome, Alan. We visited Alan's town today, a group of us, myself, Dick Ward, the police chief, emergency management director, and a finance committee chairman. Alan, please tell us about yourself and your reasons for seeking the position of Cavett Town Administrator, and how your experience and training qualifies you to help Cavett meet the challenges described in the profile.
Can, may I mention something, Alan, first? Should we have Alan, the candidates over there where the camera can?
Yeah, you could do that. That's a good idea.
Better, Alan? We want the citizens to see. Is that a better view, Pete?
Yeah.
The glare off the back of the head, I think.
Yeah. All right.
I'm sorry, Alan.
Not at all. We had a brief introduction, but Jack is my, and members of the board, as my resume pointed out, I've had both an elected and politi- political and appointed administrative career, also some private industry background. So, I guess the long and short of the history is that I've been involved in government for a very long time, both as a school committee member and as an aide in the State House, eventually becoming a state representative. I like to view my time on both of those committees in the legislature representing my district as a problem solver. We've gotten things done. I could go on and on and on with legislative accomplishments, but I think in your package you can see that thirty years later, the town of Rainham is going to name their athletic fields at Borden Colony after me, and thanks for the efforts I made to get three hundred and fifty acres of land turned over to the town of Rainham. It was state-owned land that the town as a community was land poor and did not have the ability to have recreational fields. We also built into that, looking into the future, the funding mechanism. I think that that is an indication of probably the way I work and work with boards, committees. We try and not look at just the immediate problem, but what is the impact going to be on the future? It wasn't enough just to get the land in Rainham, but now how are we going to be able to build the fields and not do that at a burden to the taxpayers? So, the additional land has an agricultural and conservation restriction. There are trails and sledding, but there's also land that gets leased out for agricultural use, and we dictated that that money specifically go to the use for the development of the fields. So, there was a funding mechanism in there to develop the recreational fields. We can fast forward, I guess, into some of the problems in Rockland, and we've done a number of similar things. With our solar field, we're building a brand-new solar field which should, it's supposed to fire up in about two weeks, and the solar field that we're building on our old landfill will power about three-quarters of the town's need. But as you know, some of that money can get lost in the budgetary process, and if we were to just say to each department, "We're going to reduce your electric bill," there would be six thousands and, six thousand dollars in this department and nine thousand that. What we've done is, we're planning on creating a utility account and taking the electric bills back under the guise of the Board of Selectmen's budget, paying all the utility bills through that, but we'll then recognize the savings through the net metering agreement, which ought to generate, which should gener- I shouldn't, my English, which should generate about three hundred thousand dollars a year, we estimate, and we're going to try and dedicate that to a specific purpose, like capital planning or something along that nature. As you know, there's always different needs in every community. How that transcends into Cavett, I know that you, like every community, are going to have unique problems that you need to do, but you need to solve. And working with each and every one of you, whether it was the solar field, which we had representatives from Conservation, the Board of Health, which operates a transfer station at the same site, the Energy Committee, the Board of Selectmen, it was in, they were in, it was an inclusive committee, and it was dedicated towards finding a solution and then resolving that, which was not easy. We had an Energy Committee that hadn't gotten the job done in about five years before the Selectmen created a separate committee at my recommendation, and then I helped work with to get them to the solution. You're going to have problems here, obviously, that need everybody to sit down in a room and say, "What is the answer?" And I've been able to do that in Rockland. I thank you for visiting Rockland today, but you saw our department head meetings. We were not having joint department head meetings when I arrived in Rockland. We had probably all but three, and two of them stopped in after the meeting. They had other conflicts which caused, it's tough to get seventeen people in a room at once, but the other two have stopped in, and Bob Corvey is probably still out icing the roads right now, our highway superintendent. So, sanding the roads. But what is unique to Cavett? To a certain degree, every single community always says, "Well, this is a tough town. We have our problems. Some of the people don't get along." If you ever came to Rockland five or six years ago, you would see a chairman that probably broke the gavel, banging the gavel down. You saw members that weren't talking to each other. You saw blogs that had two hundred and, two hundred and fifty hits in the town where everybody was at each other's throat for whatever reason. Seemingly, over the last five years, all of that has gone away, and while I can't take sole credit, I do believe that it was partially the leadership that I provided, the answers that I provided, the willingness to talk to everybody to try and find those solutions that we have to do and get the civility back. I have a board that's made up of Democrats, Republicans, and Independents. I have department heads that run the gamut on their political views, but in the end, we all want the best thing, and that is what's best for Rockland. I think that we can probably do the same thing here in Cavett, and some of that is making sure that information that goes out is factual and getting everyone into the room. I should have, and I'd love to sit here and talk to you for an hour about one project after another in Rockland, and I could certainly do that. I don't know if you're going to have additional questions, but.
We allotted an hour to each candidate, and we have questions.
I took a very difficult situation in Rockland where there were two million dollars in debt and got them organized to the point they were on probation with the Department of Revenue. Today, we have free cash. We're funding, to a certain degree, a small stabilization account, which we hope to increase. We're addressing our OPEB responsibilities. We were just notified through our audit process that we actually reduced our OPEB obligation by one percent, and I, while I recognize there may be a few communities that have done that, I don't know many that have, and it's just making sure that we're very responsible with the taxpayers' dollars.
Finished?
I think. I can never stop.
I know you can.
You let me know when you want.
I just want to let you know we have an hour allocated to each, and similar to like when you were in the interview process with the screening committee, how we tried to keep on schedule.
We've got a lot done at the screening committee, so.
Yeah, we did, and we have fifteen minutes left this time, so.
Okay.
Helen's going to ask you the first question.
Thank you, Alan. Being as specific as possible, this is where you can elaborate, what do you see as the three most significant issues facing Cavett in the next year or two, and how do you propose to address these issues?
You know, I probably would sit down with each one of you to determine what the next three or key issues are regarding Cavett specifically, and you would let me know. But as I looked at things, I can see that you need some economic development, and I, to elaborate on some of those things, I know with Route forty-four coming through and as we've been doing development, and all communities want development, we prioritized in Rockland, and again, at my behest, we implemented a best practices procedure, which made it a little easier for business to come in and locate and meet with all the various boards. In many communities, it's a very difficult thing to do because the Conservation Board meets on the second and third, or second and fourth Tuesday, and then the Planning Committee meets the other weeks on Tuesday nights, and sometimes the zoning committee, zoning variance committee may only meet once a. We got them all into one room, so when we get a very good project coming in, we hold a single meeting so that a developer can get all the answers at once and can get an answer quickly. We also have done TIFs. I personally, tax incentive financing, personally promoted the TIFs in order to, number one, help companies in Rockland, stay in Rockland and expand in Rockland, and also to attract. So, the TIFs have worked out very well. What I am hearing from a number of your people is there is an issue regarding building a new school, and some of that is certainly credibility, I think, of your financial team and/or the residents to realize what the actual cost would be and how to get that done and how to best get that done. I know that two of you toured the Rockland schools today, and we came up with a very innovative program, which, again, using some of my State House contacts, we were able to present to the school building authority, and we were able to resolve our fifth through twelfth grade issues. We have a brand-new junior high, a completely renovated high school. We jointly use the auditorium, gymnasium, library, and lecture hall, and there is what's called the Main Street, where the buildings do connect for convenience of some program and convenience of staff. So, I think it was an innovative program. It was cost-effective both for the state, it was a new program for the state because typically they only want to replace either a middle school or a high school, but the Rockland schools were in that situation, that the Rockland schools were in that situation, that it was a difficult situation, and we needed really eight grades. Not taking no for an answer from the state where you can only do four, we were willing to look outside the normal parameters and not just take no for an answer and hit them with an innovative program and then get the endorsement. So, I think beyond that, I, those are two, I guess, and after that, it would really be, you know, in meeting with each and every one of you as far as maintaining a civility in the community. I have understood that there is maybe a little bit of diversity, or I don't debate going on in the community, and I can tell you, I faced the board with probably the single worst individual I've ever seen elected to public office, and we got through that year and a half of nightmare, in my opinion, but the voters saw fit to remove the person after that. But we still dealt with all those things. We dealt with everything we had to do with ethics, with open meeting, with all of our boards and individuals going forward, and we created a very civil community, and I think it's indicative in the community today that our home values have gone up, our home sales have gone up, the attitude and morale in the community have substantially gone up, and, you know, you can promote right from this office what the attitude in the community is and should be, and you've got people today that, I think when I got there, a lot of people were kind of looking down at their toes and, "Yeah, I'm from Rockland," and today they're holding their chins up high and they're saying, "Yeah, I'm from Rockland." So, we've, we've created a very positive community outlook, so.
Follow-up questions?
You, you said economic development, Alan, and the new school. Did you have a third one, too?
I think it was the attitude in the community. I think you need to raise the morale, what I am, and again, I've talked to a number of your people. I, I am hearing that there is some divergence of opinion, I guess, to be polite.
Any more follow-up questions?
Just real quick, why do you want to work for Cavett?
Well, you know, I've been in Rockland for a long time, and it was, Rockland was very good to me to give me the opportunity. Rockland has traditionally been a little lower on the pay scale. This would be an increase in salary, to be honest with you regarding that. Additionally, I love the job. I think I have addressed a great number of the issues in Rockland and maybe just looking for a new challenge. I'd like to stay in the area. So, there were opportunities. I was asked to apply to a couple of other communities that were further away. I have applied to one other position besides Cavett since I've been in Rockland, and that was Howardshire as a finalist. Would have made the transition a little difficult for my wife and I, but she only has about three years left of work. She is a teacher, and I don't have that luxury. I am going to have another probably eight or ten, I don't know, but I look at Cavett as, it was an opportunity. Your Town Administrator had left, great facilities, the finances are in much better shape than what I originally inherited in Rockland, and I'm looking at Cavett as I get to stay home in Bridgewater. It's, it's an easy commute. It's a nice community. I do know a few people in the town, and just a, a new challenge.
Thank you.
When do you attribute the success of those debt exclusions and overrides? I don't think people understand that you had, I believe it was three debt exclusions and the proposition, two and a half override, to have all of that passed in such a short period of time?
Well, I think.
Was it three debt exclusions that you had?
Yes.
That's what John was talking about, John Rogers.
Yeah. We did, we did a debt exclusion for the schools, we did a debt exclusion for the senior center, and we did a debt exclusion for the roads. And part of that is forced out of necessity. When you don't spend enough money on preventative maintenance, then sometimes you have to replace certain facilities. The roads, we were not spending nearly enough on an annual basis in the town of Rockland when I got there for the roads, and people would always say, "You know you're in Rockland as soon as you cross the border." Of course, the mechanics are a little upset because there aren't as many potholes, a little less work for them, but I think a couple of things. Now, as you know, there are people who will say no to any tax increase, and there are people who will embrace any tax increase. And then is the great divide in the middle. We had the ability to show people what the results would be and justify what the spending would be in each and every case, and as always, there were those people who would misrepresent what the impact of some of the taxes in the building would be, and we were able to go out and get our opinions and work with the assessors and tell people what a factual number actually was so that we had credibility with the voters. When we went for the debt exclusion for the roads, we told the people exactly what roads would be done, not just give us some more money and we're going to use them on some roads and see how far we can get. We went out and counted every single water gate and every single drainage and what the curves were, and whether this road was twenty-four feet wide or twenty-eight feet wide, and how far that road had to be ground down or completely replaced. It was a very detailed plan to say, "This is exactly what we want to do, and this is exactly what it's going to cost us." With the schools, we were able to tell people exactly what it was going to cost on their tax bill. We used to get a lot of comments. Jack, I don't want to throw anything at your brother who's the chairman in Abington, but when I got to Rockland, when I got to Rockland, everyone would always say, "Well, in Abington, they're doing this, and in Abington, they're doing that. Why can't we do it in Rockland?" I did the study that showed that in Abington, they were paying on average a thousand dollars more per house in taxes, and we were able to say to the people then, "If you give us a thousand dollars more per house, we'll do exactly what Abington's doing." But in the end, if you're not careful with the money, Abington actually closed a school last week. We have to watch the money so that the people have faith in what we're doing. We also have to demonstrate that we are being wise with the money. When I got to Rockland, I poured over every account as, as it would come up. I found thirty vehicles that were still on our insurance tab. I think it was actually thirty-six. We saved eighteen thousand dollars. We had the landfill that we had to cut all the time, but we couldn't afford a tractor for the recreation department, but we were spending seven thousand dollars a year to have the landfill cap, it has to be cut twice a year to prevent anything from growing down and permeating the rubber, you know, the seal. Got together with Recreation Department, "If I buy you a tractor, will you cut the landfill for me twice a year?" And they said, "Yes," and we got a tractor out of it, and the landfill's got, and I think it was just sometimes a different look. I'm not saying that Rick did everything right or wrong when he was here, but sometimes it's just a different set of eyes. However, Rockland got into their situation, nobody was looking to say, "Do we still have all those vehicles that we're insuring?" So, I had CDM, who actually had the contract for monitoring the landfill.
That would be Camp Dresser and McKee?
Yes.
Okay.
My apologies. They were calling for me to pay a bill, and it can't get paid until I sign off as a Town Administrator, and I said, "I'm not signing off." They said, "Why not?" I said, "I have no idea what you do for me." So, of course, now immediately, they're in my office, and I got a full explanation on what Camp Dresser and McKee was doing for the monitoring of landfill to help me educate myself as to what the needs were in Rockland, and that's, again, the kind of dedication I would bring to the job here in Rockland. I want to know where every dime is going and why we're spending the money.
Okay. We have forty minutes for six more questions, so I'll have to gauge it accordingly. You know I did that in the screening committee, so you must be used to it, the general public here isn't. Helen, do we have you for the second question?
Yeah. Alan, we continue to face economic slowdowns. Cavett's unfunded liability continues to grow. We are in a great need, as you know, for police, fire, school, and other infrastructures to be built or rehabbed. Have you ever had to design, direct, or oversee reduction of expenses or consolidations of departments due to circumstances such as the examples I just laid out? If you did, can you describe your specific role, the process you utilized, the degree of success, and what, if anything, would you do differently if it wasn't a total success?
I'm going to need a cheat sheet for all of those questions, but I think when I first arrived in Cavett, in Rockland, we were faced with having to lay off employees if an override didn't go through. And so, when you say, "Did we have to design, lay off, or whatever," we had fully prepared layoffs for a number of town employees and/or consolidation of services and what we were going to have to do if the override didn't go through. We met with the unions. We laid it out to the unions to say, "This is how many people you will loop." We planned on what our workman's compensation costs were going to be for the following year, our unemployment benefits. As you know, in, in theory, you have to lay off three or an extra one for every person you lay off. You got to lay off another, every two you lay off, you got to lay off a third. So, we were in that process. We also were able to then say to the voters, "This is exactly what's going to happen." Now, we were faced with, and again, within a year of my arrival in Rockland, we were faced with closing the library, the Council on Aging, the Teen Center, and the Recreation Department. And what we developed after this, we passed a budget, actually, at town meeting, that included with an override and without an override, so the voters knew exactly what they were voting on, and if they didn't vote it, these departments were zero-funded. I developed a concept, and again, you can't by law bind a future town meeting, but we developed the concept of foundation budgets. So, when we went forward to the, to the voters, we said, "If you give us this extra four-hundred and plus thousand dollars for the library, that that is a foundation budget that can't be cut. In the library, you're voting to raise your taxes by the argument sake, fifty-three cents on your specific tax bill on average, that's the library money, and we can't come back to you and threaten you again in six years. We're going to close the library if you don't pass this budget again." So, we created in Rockland the concept of a foundation budget. They get that budget and the two and a half that it generates each year because it's a, it's an override on your property tax, so it's not subject to the additional state funds and all that. That does not prevent the library or the park department or anyone from coming back, but it certainly says, this is budgetarily, this is going forward, you know that you're guaranteed that, and it becomes, in the community, a third rail. So, I think that we faced, planned, evaluated, and told everyone exactly what the impacts would be if you didn't do the override, and we let them know what it was going to be. We met with the employees, let them know who was going to be gone based on seniority and/or the contracts the way they read. We had letters ready to implement all of those things, and we also had a budget that was passed that included the fact that it might not catch the override. So, I think we did all of those things. We also addressed it by telling people with a foundation budget that we could resolve all those issues. So, the next on the long-term planning, as you say, I, I, I understand the unfunded liability and the OPEB, other post-employment benefits, and we addressed that through our healthcare reform. I think that we had one of the best plans that went through. We have a GIC look-alike that we've embraced with the Mayflower Municipal Healthcare Group, which most of the communities in Plymouth County are part of, and while I go on with that, let me segue into one of my comments on why I think I'd be a great fit here. Many of the organizations Cavett already deals with, the Retirement Board here in Plymouth County, and/or the Mayflower Group and the Plymouth County Commissioners are groups that I'm already dealing with in one capacity or another. I have breakfast tomorrow morning, for example, with the treasurer because the Mayflower Healthcare Group, I think, is unfairly allowing our employees, who did do a GIC look-alike, to subsidize other plans, and it's a concern for us, it's a concern for others, and one of my questions is, how are we going to address this when you set the rates in the future with Mayflower, and it's been a concern, and we're having breakfast.
We're part of Gateway. We're not part of the Mayflower.
You're not part of Mayflower? Okay. Mayflower's done very well. They have done well, and certainly happy to look at it, but I am not familiar with Gateway.
You, you can become familiar with it if you, if you're familiar with Mayflower.
You know, it walks like a duck and it talks like, you know.
All right. Moving right along. I have the next question. Cavett is rich in natural resources and well-known for its strong agricultural base. How would you create a balance between preserving the agricultural history and the need for economic development? And then I'm going to have a follow-up question after that, so.
Well, I think it's been interesting that certainly in Rockland, we have some land that's adjacent to, and Bridgewater, my hometown, where I was as a selectman, we have land that's adjacent to the highways and easily accessible and more readily developable, and I think if you look at community-wide, there were those areas where you want to be pro-business, and then there, there were those areas that we can certainly nurture the conservation land. I was instrumental in Rockland in both establishing, number one, a rail trail and dedicating land that we had taken for taxes to conservation so that there's a conservation restriction and they shall remain that way, and eventually, we, we do envision that there'd be a link in the town of Rockland, but I embraced it. I also argued with a couple of my open space people when they wanted to take prime developable land near our developable roadways up near the highway and say, "That might not be the best place for open space and park. That's where I'm hoping to get the tax monies that we will need to hold on to some of the programs." So, there's a balance to be struck, but I, I'm on the South Shore Chamber of Commerce Economic Council with Peter Forman as the head of that body. I spoke with him today, and we were talking about a business that might be interested in Rockland. There is a balance. Peter was also thrilled with the rail trail. There is a balance to be struck in any community, so I think that, as you ask, how do you do all those things, I think that you recognize that Cavett, and Cavett has a lot more space than Rockland, and Bridgewater, where I am, we have acres and acres and acres of farmland up near the prison, and there are areas which, there was a piece that I got segregated back when I was a rep for the Boy Scouts. There are areas that service certain purposes much better than others, and you just have to have that vision, I guess. There are areas that service certain purposes much better than others, and, and you just have to have that vision, I guess.
Let's segue right into my next question. So, uh, cranberry prices have remained low for many years, and we could be experiencing the advent or the demise of the cranberry farming in this region due to competition, similar to the shoe industry and dairy farm, farming declines. How would you approach land issues to prevent overdevelopment from cranberry farmers who may, may be forced to bail out? AD Makepeace, I'll give you an example, has a thirty-year plan for developing their holdings, and it deals with different types of development they want to do. So, how would you approach that to prevent, if all of a sudden the prices fell out and, uh, fell out of the bottom and people were forced to dump that to, say, developers?
There are, there are a few ways that you can do it, and, and certainly, um, if you have a housing committee, I don't know where you are on your forty Bs, if at, if at all, but if you have a plan, number one, if you have a plan and, and it was something, again, we were the nineteenth community in Bridgewater when I was a selectman to get an approved plan through the state. And again, it was trying to have some foresight and so that we didn't get a number of these developments just rammed down our throat. By having a plan approved and trying to implement that, you're able to, uh, reduce by half the obligation a community has on a forty B program. So, you should have, if you don't already have, a housing, um, board to develop the plan, number one. The other thing you can do is planned unit development. You work, uh, with the builders and developers and, and maybe the houses themselves might be built on instead of acre or two-acre lots, you know, on a third of an acre or a quarter acre, and you maintain, um, greenways around that property. Number one, it's less roads, it's less water lines, it's less to plow and upkeep as far as all of those homes. They don't have two hundred feet of frontage or a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. You have a smaller development, it's easier to, and you maintain open space. And additionally, I will do the best I can. I'm doing everything I can now. I have cranberries every single day, but, uh, I was telling the search committee, I'm a big cranberry fan, so... You know, short of town-wide planning, but I, I mean, there's, and I think it's a very wise thing to do is to have people in to say, what are we gonna do? Let's have some planned unit development, let's have a housing plan. Can we supply the water? Can we supply the sewage? I know that there are certain restrictions, for example, in developing in Rockland because they have limited sewer capacity. There has to be an eleven-foot-one replacement, so, uh, there are certain things you can hang your hat on and others that you can't, but we have gone ahead with planning, uh, and keep the housing concentrated and keep open space.
Okay. Dick's gonna ask the next question.
I'm short and sweet. In this period of economic develop, or economic downturn and declining local aid and revenues, what steps should the town of Carver take to provide consistent levels of service?
Well, and, and again, I think it's, it's the proper planning. I think that, uh, in our contracts, that we have, uh, a lot of planning, where in the old days, as you know, there were all kinds of benefits that were sometimes given out and people did not worry about paying the tab. Let the next board of selectmen or let some other future board deal with that. And what's faced with is now the bills have come due. So, we're faced with making sure that there are actual costs in anything that we give away, that you do that cost analysis to say, this is what can and should be done. And again, I, I refer to Rockland because they did not have a stabilization fund. They did not have an emergency fund. They didn't have anything. We have to establish that. The state of Massachusetts has the third-largest stabilization fund of any state, uh, of all the fifty states. It's, is the third largest, and they were able to tap that through this economic decline for some of the local aid that we did receive. We have to fight to make sure that the state obviously gives us our local aid. I am familiar with the legislative delegation, I'm familiar with the halls of the State House. I think I can be an effective lobbyist. We've had to have a couple pieces of legislation go through for the town of Rockland. I think I can help, uh, here in Carver if called upon. But it's also making sure that we have that rainy day account, that we are putting a percentage of our funds away. Proper planning says that you should have anywhere between five and ten percent of your money in some sort of reserve, or in the case, as we're talking about, the solar fields, we want to use the savings from the solar fields for capital planning. That's my suggestion. Whether or not it gets passed a selectman, the finance committee and town meeting will be something entirely different, but, uh, I believe that we can make the arguments to say, the money's gonna be here so that when you either want to buy the solar field after the solar energy credits go away for the developer, or you need to buy a fire truck, or you need to put a roof on the school, or you have that emergency vehicle need in the community, that there is a fund for capital planning to already be planning on using this funding from. It can also be used for bonds for specific needs that, um, are gonna be long-term. We built a senior center, it's approximately three million dollars. If we had three hundred thousand and the town had decided, we're gonna bond it for twenty years and take a hundred and fifty thousand of that savings and we can fund the senior center, they could've done it without doing an override. That funding was not available at the time that we did the override for the senior center. But, again, it goes back to planning. We don't necessarily have to spend every dime we bring in, the minute we bring it in.
Okay. Helen?
Yes.
Back to you again.
Back to me again. It's been a while. In, in Carver, some of the department heads report directly to the, uh, board of selectmen through you, the town administrator. Some report to elected boards, and some are elected directly to the citizens. How do you manage, motivate, and ensure that the department heads are fully accountable for the services they deliver in this complex structure? How would you manage relationships with elected boards and appointed committees?
You know, I love the question only because I, I always refer to it as, uh, you know, I'm in charge of herding cats, and I know it gets used quite often, but we have the exact same convoluted structure in Rockland. Some people report directly to the board of selectmen or me, uh, collectively. Some are elected, some have their other elected committees. But I guess I can only say that, uh, um, look at what we have done. And, uh, Helen, I'm sorry, you weren't at our department head meeting today, but many of those people did not have to be there, but they're there. And they come, we have monthly meetings, we keep people informed, so it's a matter of communications and, uh, cajoling 'cause sooner or later, even if you're an elected official, you sometimes have to go to the town administrator to say, wait a minute, I have this issue, can you help me out? We're all in this together, and as long as we have a sense of community, camaraderie, cooperation, we're able to get all of those things done. We have separate subcommittee meetings sometimes of, um, public safety personnel. We'll have the finance. Now, I have an elected treasurer and an elected tax collector, uh, an assessor that reports to a board of assessors, and accountant that reports to the board of selectmen hired by the board of selectmen through me. So, we have all three of those people that you just described, and yet that's our financial team for the most part. And yet, we have meetings. We have quarterly meetings and/or if necessary, um, more often than that, and we resolve those issues. What's coming over from the assessor's office so that the tax collector can get the bills out on time? What are our balances? What are our options? So, um, other than saying, uh, call any single one of the department heads that I have in Rockland, elected, appointed, or reporting to another board, and they will tell you the same thing. Power of persuasion, uh, leadership, uh, whatever you want to call it. I mean, I, I, I do have a bit of the salesman in me, I know, I always have, uh... They come along for the ride. Everyone wants to be part of a success story, and I think that's what we've done. We've created a success story and people feel good about themselves, so... But it's only because everyone is cooperating. None of us in government are an island, and I can't say, I did this, we did this, Rockland did this. And in Carver, it's not gonna be that I did something or you did something. We're going to accomplish things.
Any follow-up questions?
My question later is kind of a follow-up.
Okay. I'm the next one, Asher a question. Can you give an example how you were, remain detached from the political process within the town or remain neutral in working towards the best interest of the citizens even when the citizens themselves are divided? And I'll have a follow-up question to that, too.
Well, number one, I, you know, I've had a number of people and, and, you know, people like to have targets, and you're there as the town administrator and spokesman for the community. The board of selectmen set the tone, though, you know, you're the policy-setting board. But what we have been able to do is, uh, let them go out. I mean, I have never contributed to any one of the candidates for office. Have I, my personal druthers, absolutely, I'm only human. But, um, you have to maintain that independence. You have to make sure that even in town hall, one of the things that I, uh, usually do sometime around January, our elections are in April, is I make sure that all the town hall employees are aware of what they can and cannot do because they have a tendency to get involved in elections. This is what you're allowed to do, this is what you're not allowed to do. You're not allowed to collect signatures at work, on time, over the desk, this, that, you know? There are a number of things you can't do, but the independence, and I remind people, I don't have a vote in town. You know, I'm here, though, to make sure that the information you get is factual. And, uh, I try and maintain that independence so that people, uh, can like an issue or not like an issue, but the basis on which they're making their decision are based on facts within the town. You know, this is how much it's gonna cost, this is how many people are involved. As far as the specific elections, uh, on one hand, you're saying, uh, how did you get an override through for the school? Well, I didn't get it through. There was a, um, a parents' group and a number of people that were involved, but the information that they were getting from the town, what is the tax cost? Where are we by comparison? Rockland at the time was third from the bottom on single-family home taxation. Only Brockton and Wareham had lower single-family average bills than, uh, the town of Rockland at the time versus someone said, well, you're gonna make me move out of town. The question comes, where are you gonna go? So, we just made sure that, from my point of view, I have to get the factual information out of there. I'm not gonna be holding signs, uh, rallies, or using a phone bank out of town hall. And I taught the Ethics and Conflict of Interest course at Bridgewater State for their master's program after I graduated, and that's one of the items that you have to be. Are you ready to read your name in the newspaper tomorrow that you were running the phone bank for a particular candidate from the selectman's office? And, uh, once people recognize that there is that line that, uh, you can do and can't do as an administrator, and I'm very careful about that.
Did you, um, in, in the passage of the, the school, uh, was the board of selectmen supportive of that? Were they divided? You know, what was your position on it? Were you, so, did you remain neutral in the information that you gave to the schools, or were you...
I believe all my information is neutral. I'm sorry if that just screamed out over the, over the mic.
No, that's fine.
But, um...
I asked that for a reason, so...
I, I believe that all of my information is, is neutral, but, uh, I try to provide an accurate representation of that information, so... Uh, and I had a board of selectmen, I, I think, uh, was about four to one. If I had to guess on exactly where they were, I think they were four to one. But, uh, the board over, they have to vote to put it on the ballot. Some people, you know, and they make their statements that, I'm voting just to put this on the ballot to give the people the opportunity to be heard. That doesn't necessarily represent my position. There are those statements that some members will make, but what I would always attempt to do is make sure that if somebody tries to say, well, this is gonna cost me four thousand dollars when it's only gonna cost them two hundred dollars, is to make sure that that two hundred dollar number, number one, is accurate and that that's the number that's out there.
Okay, now, um, and you mentioned in a prior, uh, question about civility. And we mentioned in this question here about, um, being neutral between citizens. You know, we, we have a fractured board here, so how are you gonna handle that?
I'm gonna talk to each one of you. Everyone's gonna get the exact same information. Everyone's gonna get, if I get a question from one member, what's the tax impact on something? I would be likely to let everyone know that the tax impact as a result of this, this question came up. It might even, I might not even say that, uh, this question came from Jack, but that this question came up, what is the tax impact of putting a, a second stop sign on every street? This is the answer, I think you all should have the information. My job is communication to make sure that you are all dealing with the same information and, uh, that that information is as accurate as possible. I maintain continual contact with all of my board members, whether it's, uh, we just got a legal brief, we got a suit filed, we got this information, I think you should know. I am, you probably, my, I'm gonna guess my members get three to four emails at a minimum from me a day, whether you open your texts or you decide not to do it. If you want to call, if you want to stop by, some of them stop by more often than others, if they want a meeting on a specific issue. Some selectmen, as you know, get very involved, and some selectmen are a little more distant. It's kind of up to them to how, what issues they want to personally get involved in. But, um, and sometimes, and I've had to tell, uh, a selectman or two on occasion, that as an individual, they can't direct me to do something, but rather, that's a policy that needs to be decided by the entire board. When a majority of the board decides that that's the policy of the board, I'll implement it. But, um, you do sometimes get those individuals, and it makes it hard, not only for me, but it makes it hard for a department head. If one member of the board directs a department head to do something and another member of the board directs the department head to do something else, then the department head comes to see me and says, what are we doing? What's going on? I get to say to both board members, let's put it on the agenda or let's have a discussion. We'll put it on the agenda and have that discussion at the next meeting, or can we work it out, uh, here amongst ourselves? But, you know, we can't be giving contradictory orders to department heads or town administrators, please. It makes it difficult.
All right, Dick, you, any follow-up questions?
That's okay.
You answered, Helen, the question for Helen on elected boards and selectmen and so on. My question is, uh, comments to. Carver is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. We've had difficulty getting people to join committees. So, what is your experience working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is the town administrator's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the board to address specific issues?
Well, again, I, I think we have to work with all the boards, uh, and we have to work with all the volunteers, and there's a great many people. I was thrilled to hear that you do have a CPA here in, um, uh, Community Preservation Act here in Carver, which we do not have in Rockland, but, um, you know, you've got some people that are interested in open space and some people that are interested in recreation and walking trails and forests and, uh, other people with downtown development. You know, I've dealt with that entire gamut, uh, and trying to keep them informed and involved and participate in their meetings, and, uh, the great thing is, and again, I'll, I'll stress it, I'm just a short little two towns away over in Bridgewater, is, you know, I stay and I go to many of those meetings in Rockland now, and I certainly would stay and go to many of those meetings here and participate. In Rockland, working with the volunteers, I'm at the flower sale and I'm at the cleanup for the rail trail, and when they have the fundraiser for the canine dog, I'm at that, and, uh, when we have a fundraiser for the food pantry, uh, I do become involved in the community in that volunteer effort and would pledge to do the same thing here. Encouraging volunteers and sometimes just, sometimes, everybody wants to belong to a winning team, so you have to create that camaraderie and you have to find also the niche for certain individuals. There are certain people that would like to be in charge of the checkbook that you would never let near it, but maybe they'll work out great on the open space committee or somebody, so... Trying to find what everybody's role is. There's, there's something out there for all, we all have a gift to give.
Any follow-up?
I was gonna ask you if you had a formula to get people to volunteer for committees.
No, but I, I, I think inclusion, and I, I think it's not substantially different than the communication that we talk about with, uh, the board of selectmen or, or other committees. You, you don't want to let a committee get so dominated by just the chairman. You want to have the inclusion of people in that committee, and you want to allow... and you want to allow that committee and, and support that. Do they need copies? Do you need to come by? What can I do to help? Do you need to be publicized? You want to come before the Board of Selectmen and tell us what your committee is doing. You can have a report before the Board of Selectmen so the public get to see it. We're doing this, we're looking for volunteers, anyone who wants to come down on sad day or we meet these particular times. Also, we have a thing that I do called, you know, Town Administrator Report, where I can then get a little off the beaten path to say, we're doing all of these different things or we received this letter. I went to the DARE graduation the other day at the Holy Family School on Union Street in Rockland. And I know that I will talk about that at our next meeting. So it's just, people like to be thanked, people like to be recognized, people like to be asked. They like to know what you're asking them to do. One of the things I learned in my old campaign days, it's not good enough to say, hey, I need sign locations. You need to say to people, I need 10 sign locations. If they have a goal in mind, then they feel successful. I need five sign locations. But if you just say, I need sign locations, they don't know if you need three or 30. What's the goal? Give them a target.
Any more follow-up questions?
I have one, quickly. Getting a volunteer is extremely difficult. However, running a committee and being part of a committee, you know, the success of it weighs on managing that committee. Have you ever had a time or do you ever feel there's a time where you need to ask a volunteer to step down? How would, how would you work through a challenge if you felt that way?
I've taken people aside sometimes and said, maybe this is a better approach. I don't know that I've ever actually said to somebody, don't come back. But there were other members of the committee, this is what I'm hearing. Just so you know, sometimes a whisper in the ear that you seem to be doing 50% of the talking. There's eight people in the room. You know, God gave us two ears and one mouth for a reason. Sometimes just a gentle nudge or is there something specific that person wants to key in on and we can work through that together? Some people want the personal recognition rather than the committee recognition. Some people want to be hidden in the committee. They don't mind participating, but they don't want the spotlight. And you just have to try and gauge.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
More follow-up questions?
I had, I had one, but it doesn't, it's a, it goes back.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Green Community Act.
Yes.
You, you're a certified, in Rockland, you're a certified green community.
And I'm thrilled to tell you that we just got the, the okay to spend the first quarter of our money. We, we were awarded $186,000 on the Green Community Act and it took us about three years to put all the pieces of the puzzle together. And like Carver, Rockland is a small town with a number of committees and one town administrator. The Board had initially agreed that they wanted to pursue this. At the same time, it wasn't the sole and only priority of the Board and we started to implement it. But there were five parts to the Green Community Act. And some people didn't like certain parts of it and some of that just took explanation. There are people that don't like, for example, the stretch code. The stretch code, however, doesn't mean that all houses and every additional be done to the new state standard building codes. It's larger homes where it's, I believe the number was 2,500 square feet, it might be 3,000 square feet, have to meet this new and improved energy efficiency, which in all likelihood will become the new state code within a year or two. So Rockland felt that by adopting that new stretch code, which was one aspect of it, that they were getting ahead of the curve on something that was coming anyways and we might be eligible for money. So we did that. We implemented as-of-right siding for solar. We implemented, we did a complete survey and audit of all of our energy usage and we have to do a 20% reduction, which we actually met the first year with a number of the lights. And we've met it in our first year. We had five, you have to come up with a five-year plan for a 20% reduction and we've accomplished that in our first year of eligibility. There is also a vehicle thing that tends to also get some resistance where, as you know, everybody in town has the old police department Crown VIX, which are considered energy inefficient. And what they tell you is, once those gas guzzling models leave a particular department, you don't just get to pass them down out of the building inspector or whoever, the fire chief. Somebody always gets the old vehicle. They fund, however, through this grant, the difference for hybrid cars. So whatever you were going to spend on a brand-new car, you can get an energy-efficient car and they, the grant will fund the difference. So there were a number of things that we were able to do and I'm thrilled that Rockland chose to go that way. We got $186,000 for more energy efficiency. So as we start to survey other parts of the town, if we can replace a boiler in the schools and reduce our oil usage, saving money, it depends what the payback time is on all of those things. But we were very excited about getting it and I apologize, I usually try and throw that out right away, that we're a green community and I'm proud of it.
So, we have five more minutes left, I'll give you your closing comments. Before we end tonight's discussion, have we just covered everything you consider relevant? Is there anything important about yourself that would you like to add? Or is there anything about the position you'd like explained?
No, as, as far as the position, I think I, I am very familiar with the position. And I think that the way you can judge me is on the job I did. And when we went into Rockland, when I went into Rockland, they were $2 million in debt. They had a Board that was nothing short of dysfunctional. They had a number of different issues in that five-year period. We've addressed some of our OPEB need, we've addressed healthcare reform. We were on probation when I arrived with DOR. We've been taken off of probation with DOR and they've recognizing that we're doing things right now. We, we were, had a negative rating with Moody's. We now have the highest rating you can have with Moody's. So we're addressing all of those budget issues. We, we've created, the Finance Committee in Rockland, when I arrived, had just finished suing the Board of Selectmen. And there was no dialogue going on at the time. And within 10 days of my arrival in Rockland, besides meeting all the Selectmen and members of the department heads, I had the Chairman of the Finance Committee in to meet with me and told him, I don't want the NMS, I want to work with you. You get all the numbers, everything I have, you have. If we're expecting this projection in state money, this is what, you're going to have the information. If we think this is what we're going to be charged for our retirement from the county, you're going to have the information. We need to work together. It's not good for the public, it's not good for the town. They were suing the Board, so. It was just a spirit of cooperation and I had a couple of people that were surprised that I would actually call up the head of the Finance Committee. For some reason, it was taboo to try and influence the head of the Finance Committee. We, we have to work together. I don't think anybody's sitting on a pedestal anywhere. So we addressed all of those. We talked about the, the solar committee. It was sitting doing nothing and now we're going to generate three-quarters of our energy on our old landfill, saving maybe as much as $300,000 a year, the Community Act. The rail trail, there's a rail line that goes from Abington to Hanover. It had old trail overgrown, it had everything under the sun on it, refrigerated stoves, tires, auto pots, et cetera. And today, it is a walking trail for all the people in the town of Rockland and we did that at absolutely no cost to the town. We found, we, a company that had done some work on the North Shore, I invited Donna Rockland. They removed the rails, the railroad ties and created a rail trail. Now, I'm told that this was somebody else's idea, they were talking about this 25 years ago in Rockland. And that's great that they were talking about it, but we got a gun. And there's a lot of people with a lot of good ideas. And there's a difference between having a good idea and implementing it. And I think across the Board, as you look at the school program or closing the library, whatever, we were faced with issues and we could just sit there and say, oh, woe is me, oh, woe is me, or resolve the issues. And I think across the Board, we've been able to do that in Rockland. So I appreciate the opportunity to meet with all of you. I would love the opportunity to come to Rockland. I won't have to relocate unless you make, excuse me, come to Carver.
I know what you meant.
I won't have to relocate, it's, it's all of 20 minutes drive and it's a great community. I do remember playing football against the old Plymouth Carver High School in the old days, but...
And let me tell you, we're thrilled that you applied.
This is a neighborhood and...
We've had four excellent candidates. We got the cream of the crop and...
I do know the other candidates.
We really enjoyed our visit to your community. And the Finance Committee Chairman accompanied us today and he was in his glory. He was like a little kid in a candy store going through that school. He, he kept the Building Committee Chairman and Superintendent busy with all those figures. He would have stayed there all day if we let him.
And I understand you do something similar here, but one of the things, again, I got implemented in Rockland and it was only with the cooperation of everybody. But we used to argue about the school budgets. And there's no more arguing about school budgets. They get a percentage, we get a percentage. I can't spend my share on the town side unless they get their share on the school side. So the old thing of you're hiding money, we're not hiding money, so.
Well, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, thank you for the visit today, very enjoyable.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess. You ready, Peter? Our next candidate that we're going to interview is Malcolm McHugh. Come up here, Mike. And Mike's a town administrator in Avon, a position he has held since 2007. He was previously Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen in Mendon, Massachusetts, and Economic Development Office of Walpole, Mass. He has also served as a Selectman in Meadsfield from 2001 to 2007. Mr. McHugh holds a BA from St. Anselm College and an MPA from Bridgewater State University. Please tell us about yourself, your reasons for seeking the position in Carver as our Town Administrator and how your experience and training qualifies you to help Carver meet the challenges described in the profile.
Well, first of all, let me thank the Board for entertaining me this evening, giving me the opportunity to interview before you. Obviously, there's no need to recite again what Selectman Franny just mentioned in terms of my background. I have been in the public administration field for just about 10 years now. I've served in elected office, as Selectman Franny mentioned. I feel that I have been very successful over the course of the 10 years that I have been in this field, progressing in, in authority, in responsibility, in a rather short time. I've spent six-plus years in the town of Avon now. Things are going well in the town of Avon, we have a very good running Town Hall, we've got very good running departments. I saw the app, I saw the posting for the position here in Carver several months ago when you put it out and I see the position here as an additional challenge for me to advance myself in terms of my profession. I'm familiar with the area, having relatives that still live in the town of Plimpton. I would like to eventually get a job down in this, in this section of, of the state. I've always been interested in this part of the state. Most of my experience thus far has been in more urban settings. Obviously, Avon is more urban, I worked in Cambridge for 15 years. This is the type of community I think that I would enjoy working in and I think that I could excel in.
Helen's going to ask the first question.
Sure. Michael, being as specific as you possibly can, what do you see as the three most significant issues facing Carver in the next year or two? And how do you propose to address these issues?
I know that in speaking with people in regards to the Water District that you have in North Carver, that whereas I originally thought that things were going swimmingly, I've been told there are some issues that need to be approached. I would, were I to be chosen as the Town Administrator, I would seek out not only the business owners in that particular location to have a discussion as to the pros and cons, what they think need to be, needs to be worked on, if anything. And then I would extend that to the residents of the Town of Carver to see what sort of impacts they feel, positive or negative. I know that Carver strives to maintain its rural character and that's what attracts most people to live and, and remain in the town. I guess, sort of going into, segueing into what I see as perhaps the second problem or the second issue, I should say, that the Town of Carver faces is maintaining that balance in which there is enough industry, there is enough commercial to offset the tax rate on residents. I think that that can be achieved, perhaps in looking at some sensible, smart growth, perhaps in the southern part of town, perhaps along Route 58, where things are zoned. But again, these need to be appropriate things that don't negatively impact the, the way of life that the residents of the Town of Carver enjoy. I'm also aware of the fact that you have, for several years, I believe eight if not more years, have been going back and forth with the need for the construction of a new school. My understanding is the state is generally in favor. The MSBA has been, has given positive feedback to the town in terms of that, that project. I would seek to, once, if I, again, we're so fortunate to have the position, to sit down and speak to all the stakeholders in this, in this project to see where the reservations are, where things can be improved, what can, what can be accomplished to move it forward, to get that project up and running.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions?
Your, your three, your Water District, your school, and what was your other one?
Economic Development, yes.
Economic Development, yep.
To help maintain the, the mix between commercial and residential.
Do you have a Water District in the town that you're in?
No, we have a Water Department. We have, it's a district in a sense.
So it's, it's Town Water?
Yes, it's Town Water.
For the whole town?
No, not for the whole town. There, there are wells.
Okay, so you deal with a Water District or a Water Department?
I do, I, I do, I do, sir. As a matter of fact, to a certain degree, more, more so than I wish to at this point. We recently had a turnover in the head of the Water Department, the Superintendent, left employment, I want to say about, it's been over a year now. And we've brought in, at one point, we brought in a temporary Superintendent and then hired a full-time who then decided to take another position after a couple of months, actually, less than a couple of months. And now we're back to another interim Superintendent that we hired through a consulting agency. In all that back and forth, out of necessity, I've been overseeing more of the Water Department than I think a Town Administrator usually does. So I've gotten quite an appreciation for the process. I've got quite an appreciation for the sensitivities of DEP to the point where I've had to deal with them on a couple of rather sensitive issues in regards to fines and whatnot and trying to mitigate and come to, come to arrangements on consent orders. Had that experience in Mendon as well. We are moving in Avon to a DPW system as opposed to a separate highway and a separate water. And I'm working in regards to that transition as well. But again, sir, I have, I think, a bit more of an appreciation than perhaps the average Town Administrator in terms of a water operation due to those, those problems and the need for somebody to step in, in, in the vacuum and, and try to keep this, this ship running straight.
Any more questions? That, the DPW, is that going to also encompass the Water Department as well?
Yes, yes.
So the DPW Superintendent will be overseeing the Water Department or...
Yeah.
Which is generally the case in a lot of communities, I think.
Yeah, it's going to depend and I think that, I think that you're right that more than likely what we will see, if, if we see somebody from the department step up, we'll see the, the Water Superintendent become the, the DPW head as opposed to the highway, the person in charge of the highway taking over the DPW. But we're still working through some of the, I shouldn't say some of, but a lot of the nuances in creating... But we're still working through some of the, I shouldn't say some of, but a lot of the nuances in creating this new entity. It was voted at town meeting in May and to be quite honest, we were a little taken aback at how successful it was on the first time out. As members of a Board of Selectmen and with experience with town meeting, a lot of times, a major change, and that is a major change in the town of Avon. A major change like that needs to be brought before town meeting on at least more than one occasion. I think given the situation with the water department to which I alluded, the town was extremely receptive, a lot quicker than we had expected. And whereas we will have all our ducks in line, the legislation, because we had to go to the state legislature to, to have a, some of the, the bylaws approved for change in, in Avon. The DPW will come into creation, will come into effect the end of June, at which time the Water Commission will no longer exist. It'll fall upon the Board of Selectmen as DPW Commissioners in a sense. But we are starting, we've started the groundwork. The legislation was only signed a couple of weeks ago. We will have all our ducks in line. I just would have liked to have had a little more time. You do what you have to do.
How does your situation in Avon regarding the school system relate to ours? Because I believe, doesn't Avon have excess capacity in the school system?
Yes, it does.
Versus what we have in our school system?
Yes, it does. And it's to the point where the town of Avon takes an awful lot of choice students and the, the operation in Avon, the school department is, if you were just to look at Avon, students is quite small and, to be quite honest, unsustainable if there weren't choice students coming in. And they come in from Brockton and Randolph and some from Stoughton. To the point where the, the state, it has been encouraging us to look at finding a regional partner and we are currently in the beginning negotiations, or I should say discussions, it's really not a negotiation at this point, with the town of Holbrook. And we have reached out to the town of Abington as well for potential three-town district. I know that the town of Carver several years ago actually went in the opposite direction and broke off from the town of Plymouth and is very proud of their system and very protective and rightfully so of their system. I think that, and hopefully any conversations have, have borne this out, I think that I enjoy very good relations and a very good reputation with my counterparts on the school side, going back to when I was a Selectman in the town of Mansfield. I've always been an advocate for appreciable, reasonable expenditures on the school side, but not without losing sight of what needs to be done on the municipal side. And I think that I've been able to, in my various roles, get that sort of message across and, and come to budget, budget agreements. Again, whether it's the eleventh hours of Selectmen in Mansfield, or whether it's during the, the process in the town of Avon, where we've never had a floor fight over, over expenditures, over who gets what piece of the pie. And I think we've done, we've moved forward. Again, I've been doing this for about ten years and before that as a member of the water Selectmen for an additional three or four years. I don't remember us coming to the, to town meeting with a budget that wasn't agreed upon between the two parties.
Okay. Helen is doing the next question.
Mike, we continue to witness prolonged, slow economic growth. Carver's unfunded pension, unfunded liability continues to grow and we are in great need for a new school, fire, police and other infrastructure improvements. Have you had to design, direct or oversee reductions of expenses or consolidations of departments due to circumstances such as the example I just mentioned? And so can you describe your specific role, the process you utilize, the degree of success? And what you would have done differently if it wasn't successful or not successful enough?
Well, we, I am not gonna say we were fortunate or unfortunate in Avon when the bad times hit. We have a staff in Avon that is bare bones to begin with. And a reduction in force, although we did inform the unions, I don't remember which year it was, probably in nine or ten when it really was bad, that we had put the option of layoffs on the table. However, it would have been very difficult for us to do that, maintain the level of service, again, with a, with a four-man operation in highway, a four-man operation in water, bare-bones staff where in, in town hall, in which many, to include myself, wear several different hats. We instituted a spending freeze and slight reductions in budgets going forward. And that was accomplished, and it was accomplished successfully, due to the fact that we had prolonged intense conversations, interactions, very open door with every department head in the town of Avon. And there was a significant amount of cooperation from the school department as well. And as I said, we really weren't in a position to lose anyone. It certainly was an option, but we, we have minimum manning with the police department. We've got minimum manning with the fire department and we would have, we would have run into contractual problems with the CBAs. We would have been able to, due to management rights, we would have been able to remove some of the AFSMI people, which is basically the, the water, the, the highway library and the town hall people. But again, we probably would have spent more in the end due to unemployment benefits that we would have needed to pay out. Due to bringing in, like in a condition like this evening, bringing in contractors to do the plowing. If we had a water main break, we'd have to bring in contractors to take care of that. And so it's really robbing Peter to pay Paul at that point. But again, we were very successful, not only in that year, but in the years before and after, not to the same extreme, and really tightening our budgets, tightening our belts and seeing through some very bad times. And were there an opportunity to do it over again? I don't think I would do it any differently. I think we weathered that storm and now, as you said, things aren't great. They look like they might be trending a little bit better. The revenues in the town of Avon actually came in not that bad this year. We've got an awful lot of free cash, which, to which I credit my staff, not myself. The building inspector and the treasure collector and brought in an awful lot of unexpected revenue, to the point where we're sitting on about a million three in free cash that we need to do something with in the, in the ensuing fiscal year. But there's still probably bumps in the road ahead. There's probably stagnation ahead. And were I to be the Town Administrator in Carver, that is the way that I would approach things. I would speak on a constant basis, on, on more than a weekly basis, with the department heads, especially the department heads with the significant budgets. In the town of Avon now, even though, like I said, things have, seem to have leveled out a bit, I meet on a weekly basis with the, with the treasure collector, the accountant and the, the assessor to continue to try to get a handle on or at least monitor on a very regular basis the revenues to make sure they're not suddenly gonna trend downwards and, to a certain degree, to get an idea if they're gonna trend upwards. A million three in free cash is great, but to a certain degree, we have to show the Selectmen and the public that that wasn't as a result of mismanagement or, or incorrect forecasting. So we've taken a step back and we try to, again, on a, on a weekly basis with that team and on a monthly basis with the rest of the department heads. I just had that, such a meeting this afternoon to get an idea where the, the spending is trending, whether we're on course, whether for some odd reason they believe that they're gonna save a significant amount of money so that we can go into a spring town meeting and have perhaps a special in the spring and, and fund some things, some capital items. You don't wanna spend free cash on anything other than a one-time sort of situation. You certainly don't wanna fund your, your operating expenses with a one-time source of, of funds. But I think that my fiscal approach, both in good and bad times, is, is very sound.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions?
Can I ask one follow-up? I'm kinda curious, because the way you managed through the bad times is interesting and, you know, I hadn't, I had put a note on your resume because I noticed that you also serve as Chief Procurement Officer and Computer Systems Administrator.
Yes.
Was that part of you wearing a lot of different hats during the downtime and you took on?
Yes, to this point, I have farmed out an appreciable amount of the computer aspect to the Town Accountant. And she's been, her, her title, I shouldn't say her title's changed, but her duties have changed enough that we have given her, you know, a salary increase to, you know, properly compensate her for that. But I still oversee all of the computer enhancements, all the computer purchases. I had been doing that pretty much by myself for a while. And as Chief Procurement Officer, right now I have three IFBs out. I'll have an RFP going out next week. And so there's a lot of, a lot of that still that I keep upon myself. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm the only one who does that on the municipal side. There's somebody obviously on the school side that does things for the education part. But I've got the proper certifications from, from the state in terms of procurement, being a procurement officer, and I actually tend to enjoy it. I find it very interesting. We're currently, we're currently demoing an old elementary school back when basically they would take a block of asbestos and carve a school out of it. So you can just imagine, you know, the sort of hazmats that we've run into. So we've split that project up into the remediation of the hazmats and then the demolition. The hazmat we awarded a couple of weeks or so ago, that work is well underway. And on the nineteenth, I'll have an opening for the IFB for the, the demo part of that project. I wish I was building something as opposed to destroying it, but that, that building needs to come down.
What type of municipal software do you use?
IT, WTI.
WTI, okay. That's what we use here. How about your operating system? What does that run on? It's just Microsoft?
It's just Microsoft, yeah.
And you keep?
Outlook and, you know, Office and such.
You keep up with your, with the CPEs for your certification for your procurement?
I actually have to go, I've got one course that I need in the spring to maintain that, but I'm currently current. But I need to keep on top of that, so I'm, I'm, I'm looking in the spring to go back to Boston.
So you do, you do keep, you do keep current with it, yeah? Okay. And I guess I'm asking the next question, so. Carver is rich in natural resources and is well-known for its strong agricultural base. How would you create a balance between preserving the agricultural history and the need for economic development? I think you already addressed this, but, and then I'll have a follow-up question.
Well, as you said, sir, I think I may have touched upon that in terms of looking at the specific zoning, looking at what makes sense in terms of potential growth in the town of Carver. Obviously, there are certain protections for agricultural land that need to be not only respected but encouraged. The town of Carver, from as long as I remember growing up, prides itself on its, its cranberry crops and it's certainly a draw to this community. I think both in terms of revenue and in terms of tourism. I would take a step back again when I first get here, if I'm lucky enough to get here, to take a look at the zoning, to look at the last several years of development, try to come up with some strategies, not only internally with people here at town hall and, and with the residents of the town. But I do have significant contacts in the state, having been the Economic Development Officer in Mansfield, I'm sorry, in Walpole and having maintained, maintained those relationships over the years. Obviously, the town of Avon is at build-out. However, we see a significant amount of turnover within, especially within the industrial park. And we are constantly working with the state in terms of trying to come up with, we're not in an ETA, however, we do have the ability to, to have legislation passed, to have TIPS put in place. We are, I don't wanna get into it too much.
Just for the general public, if you could.
Oh, a tax, a tax incentive financing, yeah. And an ETA is an economic target area.
Yeah, because I might understand it in the rest of the board, but the general public.
Sometimes we get a little too deep into the vernacular, the jargon, but. So I would just look at every tool. Again, I, I would, I would concentrate on the assets we have here in the town of Carver, both in terms of staff and, and the people in the community. But I would also look outside in terms of opportunities, in terms of conversations that I could have with people in Boston. To include the elected representatives above, above the Board of Selectmen, the state rep, the state senator, even up to the Congressman and, and the members of Senate.
The cranberry prices have remained low for many years and we could be experiencing the advent of the demise of the cranberry farming in this region due to competition similar to what happened in the shoe industry and the dairy farming declines. How would you approach land issues to prevent overdevelopment from farmers that might have to bail out their investment in their land?
Well, I think it would be important and it probably would make sense, hopefully that wouldn't occur, but to, to have an eye on it, to, to have a strategy in, in the coming years. In terms of overdevelopment, we'd have to look at what this affordable housing stock here is in the town of Carver. I am not a proponent of forty Bs. I never have been. I'm not ashamed to say that. When I was on the Board of Selectmen in Mansfield, I worked with the, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Norton to try to pass stronger legislation to try to hold, to draw in the, the lack of restriction on, on development. I think it's a, it's a terrible law. I think it's a law that's been abused. I think it was created with good intentions back several years ago. However, I think that you find that some developers are taking advantage of a good-natured piece of legislation to the point where they're building just about wherever they want. They're trumping zoning. They're putting increased pressure on the finances of a town in terms of education, in terms of emergency services. So we would have to come up with a comprehensive approach if these pieces of land become available so that we can maintain to a degree allowable by law control over those developments and a, a strong say in what we see go in there.
Any follow-up questions? Dick, I think you're gonna ask the next question.
Mike, in, in the case, in this period of economic downturn and declining local aid and revenues, what steps should the town of Carver take to provide consistent levels of service? Some of it you've already addressed.
Yeah, as I said, I think that unfortunately, in a time of downturn, everything's on the table. And there are certain things, there are certain fixed costs that can't be adjusted, electricity, health benefits. However, that being said, and, and using health benefits as, as an example, there are steps that you can take to go into negotiation with the unions to see if there is something that might be amicable to both sides in terms of lowering the cost to the town, perhaps providing a better offering to the employees so that in the end you're not losing anyone and affecting services. I think that a thorough, as we did in Avon, I think a thorough investigation of each department would need to take place to see if there are areas that could not necessarily be cut but not expanded upon in bad times. That being said, you certainly need to maintain your, your capital. You need to maintain your, your vehicles. You need to maintain your buildings. You don't wanna get to a point where you're, you're saving pennies but saving dollars in the long run. It's, 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 it's not an easy, it's not an easy task and it's not a, you know, one-size-fits-all solution for, for any community. And some of the things that we were able to accomplish in Avon aren't necessarily things that we might be able to accomplish here in Carver. And, and the reverse is true. There may be some things here in Carver that could have been, that can be done that I may not have been able to do in the, the town of Avon. It's really an all-encompassing sort of approach that you need to take and you really can't dismiss any sort of, an option.
What about any new revenues?
Well, that, that would certainly be the case as well. And that goes back, I guess, to some of the points I made in regards to economic development. Obviously, the town is in, any of your town is in a position where they can't increase the, the overall levy by other than two and a half. So you're, I think, properly stymied in that direction. The only way you can do is to look out and see if there are opportunities in terms of perhaps redeveloping or reinventing what you've already got in place for, for businesses. I know in, in Avon and in Mansfield, we looked on a regular basis as to whether or not there were better uses for pieces of property, if we could move from, and I don't mean any, any, casting aspersions on distribution centers, but obviously if you've got a manufacturer in a building as opposed but obviously if you've got a manufacturer in a building as opposed to, um, as opposed to a distributor, the tax base increases. So we could look at what's currently going on in the town of Carver, looking to see what the best uses might be, work obviously in concert with the property owners. Certainly, they have to be involved and can't be forced to do something that, um, that they don't want to do. We could, again, as I touched upon, we could look at possible tax incentives to bring companies in that, um, that may increase the, um, the tax base. Um, there could be a comprehensive look at, and I know that this is somewhat taboo, uh, however, we could look and see whether or not the current fee structures are appropriate in terms of supporting the departments that, uh, that do the various services, to issue the various licenses and permits and whatnot. I don't know if that's the case here in, in Carver. I obviously haven't had a chance to look that deeply into it, but that would be something we would need to take a look at. And again, you, other than that, we're sort of stymied in terms of revenues since the tax base will be what the tax base is.
Any further questions, Dick?
Oh, I'm good on that one.
Helen, you have the next question.
All righty, thank you. Um, Mike, in Carver, some of the department heads report directly to the Board of Selectmen through the town administrator. Some report to elected boards and some are elected directly by the citizens. How do you manage, motivate, and ensure the department heads are fully accountable for the services they deliver in this kind of structure? And how would you manage relationships with the elected boards and appointed committees?
Well, I, I think you'll find, uh, if you were to inquire in Avon, we've got a similar situation. I don't mean that in a wrong way. The, the structure is similar in the town of Avon. But I think you'd find that I have a very inclusive approach, not only to appointed staff, but to those that are hired. And, um, I think that I've worked very successfully with them. It was also the situation in the town of Menden, not so much in Mansfield. But, um, again, I, I run regular department meetings. Everyone participates. I haven't had any issues in terms of butting heads with any of the elected officials. Nine times out of ten, if not more, you, people who get elected to office have the best of intentions. They want to do a good job. Um, they often seek my advice, and I often seek their advice. It's, it's a, it's a team effort. Um, I think one of my strengths is the fact that I don't believe that I know everything. And those things that, um, that I, that I don't know, I don't pretend. I go out and I speak with my colleagues in, in Town Hall, the elected officials or, or appointed officials. And I think that generates a sense of camaraderie, a sense of teamwork. And that's the sort of approach I would try to bring here. I shouldn't say I would try, I will bring here.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions?
My question after you, Jack, relates to that. It'll be kind of like a follow-up, Mike.
Now, can you give us an example of how you would remain detached from the political process within the town and remain neutral and work in towards the best interest of the citizens, even when the citizens themselves are divided?
Well, Selectmen Franny, I, I think that the fact that I have sat in all of your chairs at one point for six years, I developed an appreciation for what you do, um, quite an appreciation, to the point where I know where the lines are drawn. To be quite frank, I've gotten political aspirations out of my system. I do not seek the limelight. I do not seek to get involved in, in political issues. The Board of Selectmen will direct me as to the position that I will be taking in, in, on their behalf in terms of promulgating their policies. Um, I have successfully, since my time in Menden, avoided any political entanglements. Um, I try to stay, what's the saying, as clean as Caesar's wife, or whatever that saying is, in terms of political entanglements. I, um, I remember that when I was getting my master's of Public Administration degree at Bridgewater State College, that that was really home, aside from the finances, aside from, um, you know, the municipal government, aside from all of the, the technical aspects that come with this sort of position. One of the overreaching, one of the overall messages that was expounded upon was the fact that in this sort of position, you are clinical, you are professional, and that you do not cross that line. And again, having been on the other side, I know right where that line is, and I do not go over that line.
Let me follow that up with, um, you know, we have a fractured board here in this town. So how are you gonna remain neutral within that process when you have two competing factions?
Um, I think, sir, that, um, and I have gone through that situation as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I have had members disagree, um, both in Menden and in the town of Avon. My approach in such a situation is to make sure that every member of the board has the same information that the rest do, that, um, anything that I send either via email, whether it's a memo, whether if, whether it's even something that's word of mouth. I believe that it is my responsibility, regardless of the position of anyone on, on any board, it's my responsibility that every member have the same amount of information so that every member can make as informed a decision as, as they can.
Any other follow-up questions? So Dick, you're up next.
Yep. Um, kind of on the line of Helen's question on department heads and, and such elected boards. Carver is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. What is your experience working with the citizen committees? And what do you feel is a town administrator's role, proper role, with citizen committees appointed by different boards to address different specific issues?
Well, I would say, sir, that you're correct by saying that you're blessed because, um, we do have a devil of a time in Avon.
I got a follow-up on that.
We do have a devil of a time in Avon, getting people to, uh, to commit the time to, to serve in government, whether as an elected official or as an appointed official. Um, I myself have served on a few citizen committees. Prior to my election to the Board of Selectmen in Mansfield, I was on the Animal Welfare Committee. I was on the Historical Committee. Um, I'm currently, um, although there really isn't much of a role to it at this point, but I'm currently the Register of Voters for one of the parties in, um, in the town of Mansfield. So I have a deep appreciation for the commitment that unpaid volunteers basically make to a town. In the town of Avon, I currently have very good relationship with those people. I bring them in. I treat them no differently than, um, paid employees. Except I try not to obviously, I don't have the same expectations out of them as I would a paid employee. Um, I try to, again, I have an all-encompassing, inclusive sort of, uh, management style. I try to meet with these boards on a fairly regular basis. Admittedly, not as, not as often as the, some of the, the major boards, like the Planning Board and the ZBA and such. But I try to bring them in. Um, I try to foster very good communications with them on a regular basis. And I try to encourage them to bring others into the fold, into dedicating some time to public service. It really is, unfortunately, in this day and age of lost art, with the busy lives that we all lead, and it's certainly understandable. Uh, people, you know, households with, uh, two members, uh, of the family working full-time jobs, uh, children going six ways from Sunday in terms of all their activities. And it's, I think that, um, the, a citizen, any citizen that chooses to serve on a board is, is an extremely valuable commodity that needs to be preserved and fostered and, uh, and encouraged.
Um, it seems like our, our demand for, uh, volunteers in the committees, we've got established committees, has increased. We announce it at every one of our Selectmen's meetings, asking for volunteers. And you've covered it a little, but do you have a formula that you would approach, like in our town, to encourage, further than you've explained?
Well, as I became, would become more comfortable in the community and, and know the people to whom I could reach out, I would work with current members of boards to try to foster at least a line of communication with interested individuals. I would, to the degree that the Board of Selectmen wished me to, so that I wasn't overstepping any boundaries, I would personally reach out to people and explain and encourage what the duties would be on the various boards. Um, I would, to the degree that we could do, and I'm not saying that you don't do it already, but I would try to use the cable system. I would try to use, uh, whatever, uh, printed media that you have here in town. Um, we could, I know that on a couple of occasions in Avon, we held breakfasts in which we invited the public to come in and have discussions as to what was available and what the particulars were of various positions. We would have members of whatever board had an opening available to have the discussion. I would be at the discussion. Uh, one or two Selectmen would possibly be at this discussion and, and try to be as open, as friendly and, and, and non-threatening, I guess. I guess, I would imagine a lot of people have, uh, you know, some trepidation about getting onto a board, somebody getting involved with maybe Conservation or the Animal Welfare Committee or, or something like that, somebody with a deep-seated passion, uh, in one of these areas, but with, I don't want to say an aversion, but, you know, an apprehension to getting involved in something. Not many people have ever served on boards. So to the degree that we could smooth over any concerns like that by bringing them in, having a, you know, offline discussion, not on camera, not in front of an audience. So obviously, it wouldn't be an open meeting. It wouldn't be a posted meeting. But to, to say in, in a quiet, non-threatening, uh, atmosphere, this is what it is, this is what it encompasses. Don't be afraid. You're not gonna do everything right at first. It takes some time to learn. Reminiscent to my first year on the Board of Selectmen, you know? You, you, you just, I can give that sort of an example to, to people. I was apprehensive. I was surprised when I got elected. I, basically, I turned around and said, "Oh, oh, God, now what do I do?" But, so I've had that sort of experience of getting on a board for the first time and learning and, and getting over the growing pains and whatnot. And I can have that sort of a back and forth with someone to try to encourage them to, to take on what can be a very rewarding, uh, experience.
Good, thank you. Helen, you have a follow-up question?
I think, um, Dick had, had a, still had a train of thought going.
Did you? Nope. Cut you off.
Nope, you didn't. I'm good. I, I was good with that explanation.
Did you have any questions, follow-up?
I just have one follow-up. Um, on the same idea of what I asked earlier with, um, elected boards and such, do you feel that the town administrators should have any oversight on committees? And as a devil's advocate, would you ever feel that you would ever have to, um, ask a volunteer to step down?
I think it's very, I don't want to say difficult, but it'd be a very unique circumstance in which one would ask somebody to step down from a position. I'm, won't get into particulars, but I have been in that position, um, both as a member of a board of Selectmen when we had something going in the wrong direction. And this was a volunteer. This was a person that was giving his or her time, I won't be specific, his or her time. And, um, trying to do the best they could. However, it wasn't working out. We were in a position where we had to move on from somebody. We've had a couple of those situations in the town of Avon. Now, I'm not the appointing authority in the town of Avon. That's, all the appointments come from the Board of Selectmen or, um, the moderator makes some appointments and whatnot. Um, but I've worked cooperatively and I don't want to say as the front person, but I would be the person that the Board of Selectmen would ask or the town moderator would ask to try to smooth over a certain situation. We would look to try to, um, to try to get to a situ, uh, a, a situation in which that particular person, you know, you really can't tell somebody how to act, but you could encourage them, give them some pointers and say, you know, that the feedback is not coming back very, very good right now. I'm not gonna tell you what to do or what not to do, but you might want to think about this, you might want to think about that. And, uh, again, do it behind closed doors in a very non-confrontational situation. Were it to reach the point where, um, it still didn't work out, well, we would, again, the board, the Appointing Board would be the ultimate arbiter in such a situation. But, um, I'd make recommendations back to the board, um, as to the direction in which I believe it should go. I would support, again, whatever the board decided. But, uh, you know, I would make a recommendation which I thought was in the best interest of that committee and the best interest of the town of Carver. It's not a pleasant thing to do. Now, I've been in a situation, not necessarily with appointed boards, but I've been in a situation where I've had to dismiss people. Um, and, uh, it's a necessary evil. It needs to get done sometimes.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I, I do have a curious question on his resume, real quick, 'cause we do have a couple of minutes. I just found it very interesting on your resume for recent publications. I'm just really curious that, um, you mentioned The Monarch and the Maple, Board and Siberian Adventure, The Soldier and the King, and The Cruise of the U-156. Are you a writer?
I was. I don't have the time to do it anymore.
That's pretty cool.
When I, um, when I was working at, um, Draper Laboratory, it was, it was a nine-to-five position. I don't look at a town administrator position as a nine-to-five. I bring a lot of work home with me, whether I'm bringing something physically home or something up here. So I haven't really had in the last ten years a lot of time to concentrate on my writing. But, um, I did publish for a space of about four or five years at least twelve different magazine articles. They were all historical, um, items. That was my, as, as Selectmen Franny, I think, mentioned, my BA is in history. Um, I would, um, I'd go to Bridgewater State College Library, and, um, that was back really before you could get a lot of information on the internet. And I would, um, I'd get into library loans from Canada and from Europe of these obscure books. And the, the articles that you mentioned, a lot of them are Canadian-American history. A lot of them are colonial history. The, uh, The Cruise of, uh, of the U-152, or was it the 156? I haven't thought about it in a while. That actually was personal family history as, um, and I don't want to get too off-base here, but, um, that was, uh, an attack by a U-boat in the First World War off of Norset Beach. And it just so happened, one of the attending physicians was my great-grandfather. He, they were living in Orleans at the time. So, um, I did a decent amount of research on that just out of personal interest, personal family interest. And that was published, I believe, in American History Magazine.
February two thousand and two?
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, it sounds right. I haven't thought about it in a bit, but, um, I have all the copies of the magazine at home. They, they paid pretty well, but part of, the, part of the payment was, I said, "I wanted at least ten copies of the magazine so I could give it away to friends and such." I did enjoy it and I do miss it, but...
Any more questions?
That's it.
Oh, good. Now, moving right along. Uh, before we end tonight's discussion, we've covered everything you consider relevant. Is there anything important about yourself that you would like to add, or is there anything about the position you'd like explained? So this is like a closing statement, so.
No, other than I would, I really think that, given my experience, given my familiarity with the area, uh, given my interest in the area geographically, I really do believe that I would be a good fit here in the town of Carver. I think I've got the proper tent, uh, temperament. I think I have the proper management approach. I think that, um, I could be very happy here for a very long time if I were so lucky to, to be chosen to this position. And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you as well.
We thank you. Very happy that you applied here. As I've stated before, that we have four excellent candidates. Uh, I'm thrilled with the response that we had to the, the process and, you know, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, sir.
We'll take a five-minute recess. And I think we're gonna come on the backroads instead of coming the highway. The traffic might be a little heavy coming up twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it depends, let's see, nine o'clock, yeah, it will be heavy. It will be heavy. But then again, you don't necessarily want to go.
We'd like to go through the country. Well, we're back in session. The next candidate will be Michael Milonowski. Mike, you wanna come up there and take a seat, and I'll just read a little thing about you. Uh, Michael has served as acting town manager in Cohasset since February two thousand and twelve. Previously, he served in a variety of economic development posts, including stints with Attleboro and its redevelopment authority, Towne Waymouth, and the Tritown Development Corporation, Town of Waymouth, and the Trittown Development Corporation, which is the Waymouth Naval Air Station. Mr. Milonowski has undergraduate and graduate degrees from UMass Amherst. So, Mike, can you please tell us about yourself, your reasons for seeking the position of Carver Town Administrator, and how your experience and training qualifies you to help Carver meet the challenges described in the profile?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I just pass on some material?
Sure.
Okay. Couple here for the audience, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for the introduction. I've been involved in municipal government, in both the, the municipal and the quasi-municipal governments, for about fifteen-plus years in different leadership roles. As you mentioned, from the Naval Air Station in South Waymouth, getting that project started up while working with the town of Waymouth, up through the town manager in, in Cohasset, that I've been in that role for almost twenty, twenty-two months. With that, in all of those roles, the, the same municipal finance laws, the same municipal regulations, whether it's ethics, whether it's procurement, whether it's land use, all apply to the same organizations. So although I've been in redevelopment authorities or heading up a naval air station, they followed the Massachusetts law, so I just want to make sure that, that, that point comes across. You know, this is my third time being down here in, in, in Carver, and, and every time I come, I, I start to, to, to enjoy and love the community a little bit more. In our meeting last week, I met some wonderful people, and, and I think that's what makes a community. And one of the things you'll find out about me when you go to visit Cohasset on, on Thursday, and in the, your packet that I just handed out, there's a whole itinerary where you'll meet every department head in the, in the town, they'll at least be available to talk to you, as you'll see, is that I pride myself on my integrity, in the fact that, you know, my job in, in this role, this is a tough position, as you all know, your job is a tough position, but as being the professional manager of a community, is that it's, it's the responsibility of this position to look out for the whole community and the long-term interest of the community. And that's what makes this position challenging, and I think, looking at my experience and background and my accomplishments, again, which I'll go over to, through this, through this interview with you, it, it highlights why I am a, a very solid candidate for, for Carver, and I think that we would have a good fit. You see me in a suit now, but at the same time, I'm, get my hands dirty, I've done a lot of carpentry work, I also harvest a red crop. My red crop is lobsters, so I, I look forward to, to learning how to, how the, how Carver and, and many people in Carver get their livelihood through raising the cranberry bugs.
Okay, Helen Maroni's going to ask the first question.
Thank you. Michael, being as specific as you possibly can, what do you see as the three most significant issues facing Carver in the next year or two? And how do you propose to address these issues?
Sure. I mean, I think, you know, clearly you know, and, and I think everyone knows, there, there are some, some, some challenges that is happening politically in, in Carver. And I think what I'm seeing is that there are several different groups that have very strong beliefs. What's nice about that is I think each one of those groups care about the community in their own way. And I see the challenges trying to, to help bring these different groups for the long-term good of Carver. So I see that as kind of the primary objective. Beyond there, you know, in reviewing the Department of Revenue's report and reviewing your audit report, there are some organizational components that need to be looked at in the town, and trying to figure out how to improve organizational efficiencies. And, and, and I think that when you look at some of my, my background and track record, I'm always trying to figure out how we as a community, or how we as a government, can improve how we operate. We can no longer operate like we did forty years ago. We're in a new economy, we don't have as many resources as we have. We as municipal employees have to do more with less, we have to work better with one another, we have to partnership. And, and I'll give you just a quick example, and I'm not saying that this would be one of the things that I would definitely propose in, in, in Carver, but in, in Cohasset, one of the things that I did was to improve customer service, which is really what our job is, in, in some fashion, particularly with the people that come into Town Hall, is that where we had a, a Board of Health, a planning board, a ZBA, a Building Inspection Department, and a CONCOM, that all had a staff of basically one. So when someone went on a vacation for two weeks, the department would shut down. And that's not providing the customer services that the, the residents expect. So what we have done with, is, is basically worked on combining all of those offices together from the standpoint of creating a central permits and inspection office. And this allows one-stop shopping, it allows for people to come in, and there's always one window that's open every hour Town Hall's open, so that people don't have to wait to get serviced. They may have to wait to meet with the conservation agent, and in Cohasset it's part-time, but at least there's a person there that can service them. And then, I think the third item is really focused on some of the long-term liabilities of the community. There's, there's certainly the, the fire station reconstruction that's going on, apparently, and from what I'm reading, and, and I need more information on this, there's some work that needs to be done at, at the elementary school, and also with the police station. But again, living in, and not on top of that, we have a lot of unfunded liabilities, like the OPEC liability, and also our pensions, which are going up this year, as, as you all know, and trying to figure out how we can fit those into what available funds are within Carver's needs. And if I can call your attention to this one document, the one on the top, Cohasset's Financial Management Policies. This would really be something similar to this, is where I would try to start with. And this was put together, when I first came into this office about twenty-two months ago, to try to define what the needs are of the communities and how we can learn to live within our budgeting means. The key point that I want to call your attention to is in the financial objectives, that the goal of the selectmen and the town managers to develop a sustainable town-wide budget based upon a forecast that provides the level of service that the town can afford within your known projected revenues. And that's tough to do, because we live in a society that everybody wants everything here and now. That's not how things are done, that's not how, you can't afford things at that. We can't always have the luxury of this and the luxury of that and the luxury of those. Sometimes we have to put some, you know, blood, sweat, and tears into figuring out what we can afford and making sure that we move forward with those in a, in a progressive fashion. I hope that answers your question.
Oh, yes.
Any follow-up?
Give me four, which is impressive.
Uh, any follow-up questions? Mr. Helen, I see you're both open. I don't know if words are going to come out of it yet, or not.
No, I'm just wondering why you are choosing Carver.
Yep.
If you can elaborate a little, like, what made you want to interview with us?
You know, at first, I, I, and I'm always an honest guy, so I hate saying this statement, to be honest, but that's just who I am, is that I was more intrigued just to find out a little bit more about Carver. I'm not going to tell you that I was sitting at home and say, "Oh, wow, Carver's position hopped up, and I'm going to run down to Carver," no, that's not what it was, so, so I don't want to say that. What I will say is that as I've gotten to know the community, I find that the community and its culture is a lot more like myself, is that, you know, my, my grandfather was a master mechanic, and, and he taught me, one of the key things in life is that, you know, learn from your mistakes and never be afraid to try to fix something. And if you fix it, and it doesn't work the first time, fix it again, try again, keep on going. And I say that from the standpoint that I see this community is, is like that, too. It's people work, you know, and are hard-working community, and, and, you know, that's, that's kind of the values and beliefs that I, that I, that I live with. Yes, I live in Cohasset, my wife and I bought a house there seven years ago. We bought it for the price of the dirt, there was a tear down, and we've rebuilt it. My son, who's twelve, has been cutting grass since he's nine, he's probably one of a handful of people in Cohasset that cut grass. But having said that, I'm just trying to give you a perspective of who I am, and, you know, again, I'm wearing a suit now, because it's what I need to do at this point, but I'm more than willing to take it off and put on the flannel shirt and go out and, you know, do what's best for the community, and then I guess that's where I come from. And I see that this community has a lot of good things. I've talked to Greg Doian, he, he just talks really highly about the community. I've talked to your auditors, I've talked to Eric Kinschall, who does other financial work for you. And everyone I talk to, people that I respect and that I know, you know, are only telling me positive things. "Oh, yeah, there's the political issues," they tell me that, but beyond the political issues, and again, there's, there's a lot of core, core goodness in, in, in Carver, and, and I guess that's why I'm, I'm more intrigued every time I come down here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more follow-up questions? Dick, he said he was going to put a flannel shirt on, do you need him to pick any by? Need him to, do any picking for you?
Uh, if you land here, you, I might be asking you to help me pick some cranberries at some point.
Hey, well, I'll tell you, we had a generator go down in, in the, in the Blizzard that we had over the sewer department, big caterpillar generator, I told you my grandfather used to work on those, and they didn't know what to do. Couldn't get a repairman in, because there was a foot and a half of snow, so I went over there, you know, dressed up, I think I had khakis and a flannel shirt, and I'm in there, and what did I find out? That, it was a simple fix, no one put the radiator cap on the radiator, so when it got to temperature, all the, the radiant flu was blowing out.
Oh, and heated up.
And we fired it up and got it going.
Jeez, our, our generator went, and what was it, they didn't put enough fuel in it or something like that? They didn't have enough gas to run it?
Was that the one in South Cal?
Yeah, so, so Helen, I think you're on board again, they asked the next question.
All right.
Oh, I didn't, Dick didn't, I was started, did I finish answering your question, Dick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you would.
Yeah.
You're already getting...
Again, I want to learn a little bit about, about cranberries, and, and I'll take you out of my eleven-foot skiff and pull up, pull up some forty-pound pots that are down forty feet in water.
Okay.
Do you mow lawns?
Do I mow lawns? No, actually, I have delegated that to my son.
I'm teasing.
Except that, although he, he, for the first two years, he was doing a lot of mohawk, so I'd have to go back and fix it, but, but he's, he's got it now.
He's got it now, now?
Yeah.
Okay, Helen, you're up.
All right, Michael, we continue to witness prolonged, slow economic growth.
Mm-hmm.
Carver's unfunded liability continues to grow, and we are in a great need for school, fire, police, and other infrastructure, rehabs are going to be needed. Have you had to design, direct, or oversee reduction of expenses or consolidations of departments due to circumstances such as the examples I mentioned? And if so, can you describe your specific role during that process? And the degree of success it had? And if it wasn't successful, or if it wasn't successful enough, what, what did you learn from it?
Okay, I'm going to go back to the financial management policies. Item number, item number seven, and again, this was put together two years ago. No one really was paying a whole lot of attention about OPEC. I mean, that is our big liability facing all towns. And what I did from that standpoint was started to raise the red flag, almost light my hair on fire, and says, "Hey, folks, we have this big unfunded liability we have to start to tackle." So that was built into one of the eight issues that we had to deal with as part of our financial management policies. From there, and let me take you to this document. This document is basically our pro forma forecast for twenty years. When I first came on board, we had none. For the first year and a half, I built a five-year pro forma plan. This year, I've just released this one as our twenty-year pro forma. Now, anything after five years, you know, through twenty, you know, obviously, it'd be great to have a crystal ball, you know, but what it does do is we're able to build our debt structure into this and look at known issues over the long term, how those will impact the town. Now, with this, I'm going to quickly take you through this. The first two groups, if you will, the first, let's say, three inches of the paper, is, is our tax levy, and then our revenues that come in from operational expenses, whether they're state aid or, or local receipts, our, our new growth, et cetera. And then from there, we have other funds that we set aside that pay for debt and capital. When you get to the middle of the document, what you'll see is that going across is we have built into, or I have built into this budget, an annual payment going into our OPEC liability of a quarter million dollars a year.
Where is that?
Uh, that's right in the middle of the page.
Under what?
Uh, under Transfer to Other Funds, the fourth bullet down.
I see it.
Transfer to Stabilization Fund?
Right after that is OPEC.
OPEC.
Yep.
Three down.
There's only one payment?
No, 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 no.
You gotta go move over.
You gotta go one more down.
Okay.
Yes. So, what this does, and then, then beyond that, and then I'm just going to kind of give a quick summary of this, and again, this, this takes, you know, a while to go through, but beyond that, then the town, what we have done is we have, I've built this process where it's no longer the towns versus the schools, it's we as a community. So we have shared expenses that are more or less fixed expenses that the community has to pay no matter what. Once we take our revenue, minus our expenses, minus our shared expenses, that leaves us with the available revenue for the next year. And similar to, to Carver, where I think you put sixty-six percent of your revenue into the school, is kind of the thing, what you see down here is sixty-one percent goes to the schools and thirty-nine percent goes to the town. And then from there, this kind of carries this out going across. The other component that I've built into here, as it relates to our financial management policies, is there's two directives in the policies beyond the OPEC. One is that we maintain a balance of five percent in our general stabilization account, and, and that's based upon bond rating agencies and what's good financial management. The second is that we build up a fund so that ten percent of our operating budget is put into capital projects and/or debt, and that's debt within the base. So, what you're seeing is that in the very bottom of this document, we're currently operating where about fifty-nine percent of our operating budget is built into capital and, and debt. And we're increasing that by two percent per year over these twenty years to meet the town objectives for our financial management policy, to get that up to ten percent. I was, up to a hu- you know, ten percent, and we'll reach that in the twenty years. That allows us to forecast, based upon a ten-year capital plan that I've just released yesterday, actually today, I should say that, this morning, that highlights every expenditure throughout the town. Now, in that ten-year capital plan, it's a twenty-seven-million-dollar ten-year capital plan. That includes building a new Town Hall, that includes a two-and-a-half-million-dollar roof, that includes all DPW, public safety equipment that has to be rolling on and off. And what this document is showing is, over a ten-year period, is that we'll bring in about twenty-some million dollars in set-aside money for that capital fund. So, two things, one is there has to be some cuts that need to be made to the capital plan, and then second is that, you know, some of the items, like the, the renovations of Town Hall will have to be bonded. But our goal is to try to pay as much as we can out of cash. All of this is done without doing a debt exclusion, without doing a Prop Two-and-a-Half override, it's all done within our, our two-and-a-half base. Now, Cohasset does tax to the levy, and, and it does go up by two-and-a-half percent every year, but, you know, that's needed to just maintain the current services. I also want to call your attention to, to the next document that you see about halfway down, I have it numbered, one through ten, and, and I think a couple of these things I'm going to, I'm going to bring to your attention. When it comes to, to financial management in, in, to your piece, and item number two is, again, this one community initiative, where the schools and the town now partner, and because of the economies of scale, we're able to share resources. We've gone out and hired a chief technology officer for the town, and that person has come in and has been able to, we've, we've provided, you know, ample amount of funding for new resources. We were operating with computers that were ten, twelve years old for the kids in school, which is not helpful to them. And what he does by having one policy, one computer thing, the schools need generally more high-powered machines than, if you will, a, um, I'm trying to figure out the right department, say, a tax collector, because they're just inputting information and, and, and I'm not saying the treasure collector doesn't need to be, do strong mathematical stuff.
Careful, I used to be treasure collector.
That's why I'm using that one, because you can help me out on this one.
You might need my vote.
But, you know, for the assistant who's receiving the information in and doing the bookkeeping, they don't need the brand-new computer, they can operate with a three-year-old computer. So my point being is that... So my point being is that we're able to take equipment, move the older equipment to Town Hall, provided it's still functional, put the new equipment in the schools, and keep that rotation going. You know, obviously, if you need to bring some specialized equipment into Town Hall, we do that. But we're giving a second life to a bunch of equipment. And I think, just 'cause I'm taking too much time on this question, if you go to number seven.
Yeah, 'cause we only have an hour.
And number seven is, i- i- in my tenure, what I've been able to do in working with departments through operational savings and financial reform is that we've been able to increase services in the Public Works Department. We added a staff person. In the library, we took a part-time librarian and made her full-time, who does, um, you know, a kids, a kids librarian. We've increased, um, gone from part-time staff to full-time staff in Elder Affairs, and they've been able to double their productivity. The Harbor Master, we've added, um, additional hours for their support. Um, the Town Accountant and Treasure Collector, we've added an additional position for that. We've created a, a position of a project management and planning. This is in essence a town engineer. And, um, also done improvements for Police and Fire. Again, all of these improved, the, all of these expansion of services have been with, been done within our existing tax base by re-looking at how the operation was and figuring out where the efficiencies were and using those efficiencies to provide more services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any follow-up question on that?
No, I think it's pretty thorough.
I have the next one.
Jack, just hit me with the timer when I'm going too long.
You can tell by when we went through the screening process that we have a schedule, so. Carver is rich in natural resources and well-known in its strong agricultural base. How would you create a balance between preserving agricultural history in the need for economic development? And I'll have a follow-up question to that as well.
You have a, fortunate that you have a strong, um, planning and conservation, um, staff in town. In Cohasset, we don't have a town planner. We also don't have a full-time conservation agent. And where I'm going with this is that you have boards that are focused on preserving the community character, the ruralness of the community, and have, working on their master plan, and I understand that they wanna update the master plan. You know, it's, I'm not gonna come in and say, "Well, this is how we're going to do it." What my role is, is to support the policy decisions of your planning and the Board of Selectmen in your community character, in what your vision is for the community. It's not my job to tell you what to do. My job is to help you guys get to where you wanna go. Now, if in that process, there's a conflict and you wanna go to, to something that's non-affordable, I have an obligation to tell you, "Can't do that." Or you have to balance that by generating some revenue on this side, which may mean some economic development someplace, to be able to pay for the vision that you want. So at the end of the day, um, my job is to support and help guide the policy directions that you, the Planning Board and the Conservation, and your master plan, which is adopted by the town, dictate.
Okay, uh, cranberry prices have been, have remained low for many years, and we could be experiencing the advent of the demise of cranberry farming in this region due to competition, similar to the shoe industry and dairy farming declines. How would you approach land issues to prevent overdevelopment from farmers having to sell off their land, uh, and bailing out?
Mm-hmm. That's a very tough question. And again, uh, although I'm a certified planner, although I have a planning background, although I have, and you see, I have a finance background, an economic development background. Again, I'm not going to, to try to dictate what needs to be done. What I'm going to do is to help support the direction of the community. I don't have a crystal ball and tell you how to answer that question. I think that comparing it to the shoe industry, you know, is a little bit different. Uh, the milk industry may have some similarities to it. I don't know enough about the cranberry industry to, to understand if this is a, a systemic problem that's gonna continue for the next 10 years? Or if this is just a, a, a blip in the, in the evolution of cranberries? You know, clearly, there's more competition in Wisconsin and elsewhere and, and overseas. But Massachusetts cranberries, Carver cranberries, there's a marketing component to that. And, and maybe that's the way, um, as I'm talking this through, that we can, can help try to promote locally grown, Carver-produced, made in America, made in Massachusetts, made in Carver cranberries. And maybe that's the differential that, that may be available to try to distinguish your product. Again, I'm speaking something that Dick knows much more than I do about the, the industry. But I'm trying to figure out what my role would be in supporting that. And I guess I'll end with, my job is to support the experts in helping out how to transition, uh, into reusing those fields for other, hopefully productive use that balances the growth of Carver that you expect.
Any follow-up?
That's not a positive prediction. We're just, like you say, you know, down.
We're just asking. I wanted to see the response of all the different communities.
I didn't want the community to think that the industry is, I mean, Ocean Spray is, is still very healthy.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
And that's why I hope this is a blip in the radar.
Yeah.
A blip in the process.
We're hoping.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
In my radar, I'm 73. It's probably time for me to retire. Um, my question is, uh.
You just got a helper. You just got a helper.
I'll help you.
Yeah. A free helper will help me a lot.
Who said it was gonna be free?
Okay. It's the only ones I hire. Volunteers. In, uh, in this period of economic downturn and declining local aid and revenues from the state and other places, what steps should our town take to provide consistent levels of service?
Um, I believe that every municipality in Massachusetts, because we've seen state revenue do this roller coaster thing. And again, I hope you're in a roller coaster peak and you're at the bottom and it's starting to start coming up quickly. But your town is, is heavily dependent upon state aid. And right now, the state's doing very well. But you've also seen decline several years ago, when the 9C cuts came out and you had to, you know, cut money in the middle of the year. Some of it was returned at the end of the year. But it created a major problem because with that, we, we don't know those things until, you know, March generally, or, or April of the year. And when that happens, you're 2/3 of the way through your budget. It's tough to come up with those numbers, which generally means you have to really raid your, your stabilization funds. Where I'm going with this is, when you have good years and you're actually having excess revenue coming in, it really is helpful to develop a financial policies so that you have targets that your town meeting adopts. It says, "We as a collectively as a town, when we, we have excess revenue, we wanna put it away and fund either one-time cost or to build that into our reserves, because we know that there will be times when things aren't as, as rosy as they may be, you know, coming up." So I think that that is key, that, that you, you take a conservative estimate in how you fi- how you forecast your revenues. And, you know, we've been very successful in Cohasset with doing that. And, um, and I know that, uh, in the, the three different sessions that I've had with the bond rating agencies to improve our bond rating in Cohasset to a AA+ with a, to a stable outlook, is that they look at policies adopted by the town that are followed. And that is starting to be a sign of a good financially managed town. I think your town has a lot of that stuff. There's a lot of good financial things that have been done in, in Carver. Uh, but you're starting to see some of your fund balance start to slip away. And, and I think we need to figure out how to start to build that up while still trying to maintain the appropriate services we have.
How about other ideas on revenues?
Well, you know, that gets into what's the will of the community as it relates to other development. And, and that could be looking at renewable energy. That could be looking at other economic development opportunities where you have the appropriate transportation and infrastructure that would allow that, you know, closer to Route 44. But, you know, a lot of that, again, comes back to, to the will of the community. I believe that, that the town should actively explore, analyze, and look at all options. Even the far-fetched crazy ideas. You need to look at them and explore them and see if that's something that we wanna do. So I, I would encourage that all solutions, all, all different, um, different development scenarios be looked at. And again, you don't have to do them, but you at least have an obligation to explore them and look at them from the community standpoint. Again, I don't have the magic bullet, 'cause I'm not gonna tell you I do, because a lot of that depends upon what the priorities are of the community. And, and I think that you're, you're, if you go back and you update your, your master plan, I think that you, you should hopefully start to see a little bit of change in that, because we're in a different world now. And when the master plan was first done, we were living in a different economy. Now we're, have to be a little bit more realistic. And that may start to change what people want to see.
Any follow-up?
Nope.
Helen?
All right.
Back to you again.
Back to me again. In Carver, some of the department heads report, um, directly to the Board of Selectmen through the, through the Town Administrator. Uh, some report to the elected boards, and some are elected directly by the citizens. How do you manage and motivate and ensure that the department heads are fully accountable for the services they deliver in this kind of a complex structure? And how would you personally manage the different elected boards and appointed committees?
Mm-hmm. I mean, I practice leading by example. And, um, you know, it's not unheard of to see me in, in Town Hall at 11:00, 12:00, 1 o'clock in the morning. You know, we're sending out emails at 2 o'clock in the morning. And I say that from the standpoint that if you want to create an environment where everyone works together, you have to be willing to roll up your sleeves, put on your flannel shirt, if you will, and go out there and, and work with everybody and listen. And, and, you know, although I have, you know, a significant background in, in, in municipal management and economic development and finance, et cetera, I don't have all the answers. But I believe and have practiced, and, and you'll hear this in, in Cohasset, that collectively, when you put the different people together and listen to their thoughts, concerns, issues, you can come up with a better solution. Um, the, the DPW Director and I are always having conversations on how to improve something. My new, uh, Director of Project Management and Planning and Engineer. You know, again, we're going through exploring different alternatives as to make things work. When it came to consolidating the permits and inspections, I gave the framework of what I'm looking for, and then I had the staff build the detail. Because we had the framework, the objective, how best can we consolidate and get there? There were a couple bumps on the road, but now, things are fine. People are happy. And it really, you know, you can't approach these positions from a dictatorial standpoint, because as you said, not everybody reports to you. Although you may have the pen at the end of the day for funding and, and paying bills or whatever it may be, uh, you need everyone to work together as a team. Um, that includes public safety, um, Public Works, and, and every other department. And, and it's also getting out there to, to, to meet and know the men and the women. You know, again, I'm known for going out and visiting the DPW site. Not the, not the facility there, I'm, I'm at it occasionally as well, but actually when they're not working on the street and trying to understand what they're doing and, you know, understand what their issues are. And if there's opportunities for me to help them, um, perform better, then we do. A real simple example is that in Cohasset, we have a lot of ballfields, we have a lot of commons, and, um, we have a tree and park crew, and they're going around on a 48-inch mower, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, all day long. So now in our capital budget, we've got a big 106-inch mower that's gonna come out so that that individual can, you know, improve his productivity in, in half and be able to get to the other things that he can't get to. And it's all those things just by going out and discussing, but, um, no one would listen before. No one would work with them. And again, it's really building the team and working with everybody. And, um, that's what makes a, a community, just like with the boards. As the boards, even though you may have different views and different interests, by working together, that's what this government structure is about.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions?
My question after Jack is a bit of a follow-up on that.
Okay, so I'm next. Can you give us an, a example of how you would remain detached from the political process within town and remain neutral and working towards the best interests of the citizens, even when the citizens themselves are divided? I'll have a follow-up to that.
Sure. I mean, that's a real tough situation that you, you're in right now. And it's not just Carver. It's not just the town that I'm in right now. It's, it's, it's happening in many small towns right now. And it, it's a, it's actually easy from, from my standpoint, is that in this position, you have to be politically neutral. Everyone gets the same information. There's no favoritism. And, and you work, um, towards the common goal. By setting up policies is that, you know, this is what the town wants to do. Um, I would hope that if, if selected as, as your Town Administrator, you know, one of our fir- first meetings, or a couple meetings will be to set down what your objectives are. And once we come up with common objectives, that's who we're working towards. So a lot of the, the stuff that goes on, you tend to just let it go on and, and move on. Having said that, I am also a big believer is when there's rumors and in fact, incorrect factual information that's going around, that it is the obligation of the Town Administrator or the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to correct that. Because what happens is it, is if incorrect information's going around, people stew that festers. It's like a sore, and it just gets worse and worse and worse. And sometimes you just have to stop it. Not to take a position, that's not the point. But to take, but to repeat what the facts are versus incorrect information that's going out there. And that's a tough job to do at times. Because when you do that, you may end up alienating one side or the other. But if you're consistent, no matter what side's doing it, at the end of the day, hopefully, people will respect what your role is to provide transparency and credible information.
Okay, my follow-up is, the board is fractured. So how do you remain neutral within that environment when you have two different factions butting heads? And you're in the middle as the, the Town Administrator?
Um, you know, it's a tough role. Um, it's, it's tough for you guys to operate. It's also tough for your subordinates that report to you to, to operate. But the key point is communication. And, and I'll give you an example. In, in Cohasset, um, I have one Selectman who won this past spring, um, who has yet to meet with me as their Town Manager, and they've been elected for whatever it is, eight, nine months. That's not productive, okay? I mean, it is what it is. It's just not productive. And again, how, to answer your question, uh, Jack, is, is this role's responsibility is to meet with everyone and understand the issues. Right or wrong, I need to understand what Dick's issue is and why he feels this way. And Jack, I need to understand your issue and why you feel that way and all the other Selectmen. So that where possible, sometimes you may be saying the same thing, just in different ways. Or you may have the same objective, but you're going about it two different ways. And that's where having the confidence of the members of the Selectmen that they can rely and trust in asked questions and received factual, honest information back allows for a lot of these tensions to go down. I'm not gonna say that I'm the Pope and I can solve all the problems. Alls I can do is try. And it takes a willing party on myself, which I'm, will do and do, and, and five other people. And then obviously, there's other boards too, and you have to go for that too. So it repeats itself.
Any follow-up questions? Dick, you're next.
Uh, this question, uh, a little bit, um, I'm trying to learn of your demeanor towards volunteers.
Yep.
So it's kind of a follow-up a little on the, on Helen's question on department heads and such. Carver is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. What is your experience working with the citizen committees? And what do you feel is the Town Administrator's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the Board or to address specific issues?
I'm gonna answer that question in two parts. One is I'd encourage someone to call the Chairman of the Advisory Committee in Cohasset, that's our Finance Committee, the Chairman of the Capital Budget Committee, the Chairman of the School Committee, the Chairman of the Planning Committee, the Chairman of the Board of Health, the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, uh, the Chairman of the Governance Committee, and ask them. Ask them about my interaction. And, um, and I'm not gonna tell you what they're gonna say, but again, I would encourage you that, 'cause, but, but here's where I look at it, is that citizens through their voluntary Is that citizens, through their volunteer efforts, and thank God, people are willing to volunteer. Because there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And we, as a government, need the input from different residents. And that's why these committees are important. That they pick up a lot of the workload. And I'm not saying the daily pushing paperwork load, but just some of the workload of understanding what needs to be done. They're a valuable resource. We can't survive without them. That's not the town government that we have. That's not our form of government here in Massachusetts. And again, they're just a critical component of this. Now, what I find a lot of times, the biggest challenge with committee groups, particularly new members, is that you almost need to have an orientation with any new type of member. And I'll give you the example of finance. Is we're fortunate to have a couple very smart people on our capital budget committee or advisory committee in Cohasset. And they've made money in the private sector. Well, they come in and they say, well, you know, and they start to look at our balance sheets and everything like, well, that's not right. And my point being is there's an educational component where you have to at least put people in the same playing field as municipal finance is different than private finance. We have these archaic rules that the state makes us follow. And you have to go back and you have to make sure they understand the rules before they start demanding things or requesting things that aren't possible. And the same thing goes with, you know, employees and so forth. And, you know, they say, well, if you've got, you know, this one bad person out of all these great two-hundred employees, why can't you do something with that one? Well, let me talk to you about labor and everything that has to happen there. So, you know, that, I tend to find myself, you know, when I have new members, is coming in and doing that. And fortunately, a lot of people come to me and ask questions before they spread out something in public without doing some research. But to close with your question, again, ask any of the chairmans, any of the committees in Cohasset. They'll tell you what I'm like. And my last point is that, you know, volunteer committees are the lifeline and the lifeblood of what makes a community a community. Sometimes they can cause a lot of problems, but at the end of the day, that's what drives the community.
We've got quite a number of openings on many of our committees. So how would you motivate folks to join committees?
Well, that's a federal question on our whole nation right now. Is how do we encourage people to get involved in their government on the local, state, or federal level? It's not just Carver. My generation, and I'll give you an example, is before, when I have young kids, twelve and nine, in sports and everything. And before I did the job in Cohasset, I'd have some of my peers come to me and they kept complaining about this, that, and the other thing. And I'd say, you know, did you go to town meeting? No, I don't go to town meeting. Okay. Did you ever go to a selectman's meeting? No. Okay, you have a planning issue. Did you ever go into the planning issues? No, I don't trust those guys. Okay. So really, why are we going to continue this conversation if you haven't done any of those things? Next week, a person's walking over to the planning board and paying attention. And/or going to another committee. And the point being is that, you know, this is where it comes out, getting the information, is that there's so much rumored innuendos by keeping factual information out there. It actually encourages people to get involved. Because if they want to have a say, they need to get involved. If they don't go to town meeting, if they don't get involved in doing any of those things, then have they earned the right to have a say? Yes, they have a say, but do they really know what they're talking about? And when you start to address that with people, I've found that people start to get involved because they want to be knowledgeable and they want to participate. Having said that, we're still in a tough society right now where, you know, the younger generation is too busy doing X, Y, and Z and doesn't want to get involved. And that is not just Carver. Now, what you may need to do is to start to look at some of your committee structures. Do you have too many committees that where you only have a pool of forty volunteers and you've got eighty positions open? Well, maybe some of those boards can be consolidated. Maybe some of those twelve-member boards, eleven-member boards can go down to five-member boards or something like that so that you can actually address the population that's willing to volunteer and you can work on a number like that. It's a tough situation.
You know, Dick and I are going to be coming down to visit your community on Thursday, but Helen isn't. So all those committees that you mentioned, you wanted us to ask them what you did. I'd kind of like you to tell us what you did because Helen won't have the opportunity to go in there. So that was the first part of your question, and I think you kind of skipped over it saying, ask those committees what you did to address those issues. So if you could briefly.
Sure, sure. You know, let's start with the advisory committee. And, you know, there's so many examples. I'm not trying to evade the question, just trying to figure where to start here.
Yeah, just one or two examples.
First of all, I go to most of the committee meetings. And there's probably been, I probably missed ten percent of committee members when I'm talking about the key ones. Advisory, which is our finance committee, capital budget, budget planning. I'm pretty much at all of those meetings and act as a resource to them. But I'm also, with the other ones, I'm always in contact with the chairman. Just before I came down here, I had the sewer commission chairman come in. And there's another one you can talk to, the water commission chairman. And here's a good example. In our town, the town manager is supposed to have joint management with the water and sewer commission because our water commission had some financial issues about five years ago. So that was put into the bylaws of the town. It says the town manager shall have joint management responsibilities with water and sewer commission. That's all it says. Well, what does that mean? It doesn't mean anything because the water and sewer commission can still do what they want without the town manager's insight. So I've gone and met with and been part of many of the water and sewer commissions, met with the chairmans, going through item by item when it comes to the water commission. Worked with them to develop an RFP, to go out and hire a new management firm to come in and manage the water. We ended up saving one-point-three million dollars over three years by doing that. That was a joint effort we did. We worked together to refinance the bonds that we had for the water commission. That saved four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of debt service payments over the twenty-year life of those bonds. That means we don't have to pay that now because our bond rating was good and we got a great rate. We worked on lowering the user water rate down by seven percent. So for the consumption rate, we still have a fixed capital cost that we didn't touch because that pays off the bonds. But because we were saving money and improving our efficiencies in the operations, we were able to pass that savings back on to the water rate users. What else have we done collectively? And basically, where these groups were operating autonomously and doing things on their own and had very little, you know, impact with town hall, now every decision gets coordinated with me. And again, I don't have a vote, but I have developed the respect of those individuals that they rely on my role and my knowledge to help them through whatever issue it is.
Can I ask my one follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Real quick, because I've asked everybody else. Some of the departments, the committees are pretty vital for, you know, maintaining Carver, Carver, period. On the opposite spectrum, do you ever feel, or have you ever had a need where you had to ask a volunteer to step down? Or how would you manage the committees if you feel like, because you do say you go to all the committee meetings? If you felt like it wasn't being run effectively, you know, and efficiently, how would you handle that?
Sure. I had an example in a planning board meeting where the chairman had to step down because he had done some legal work for a developer years ago. So he just wanted to preclude himself, so he stepped off the board for that discussion. And they had another individual run the meeting. And it had to do with a transportation issue that was overflowing onto a side street where there was a long-established residential neighborhood. So it was a contentious issue, you know? The neighborhood wanted to stop development. The planning board's obligated to give them a permit based upon them meeting their performance standards, which they did. And, you know, the planning board was able to reduce the size of the development but couldn't stop it. And the neighborhood wanted it stopped. So again, I'm giving the flavor of contentious issue. Well, when this person stood up to be chairman, and I'm sitting in the background, is he wouldn't allow the neighborhood to speak. And he was just running the meeting with a fist, saying, no, no more talking, no more this, no more that, no more this. And finally, I asked for a break of the committee. And I took him aside and I said to him, and I also talked to the chairman that was there, and said, you know, this is, you may be technically correct that you can gavel them down because you were moving on and you'd only, he'd only given them five minutes total for the whole neighborhood to speak, and they'd hit their five minutes and they had to speak for another half an hour. And I said, you may be technically correct that you can do that because that was all the agenda. But when you have the citizens there that want to voice something, right or wrong, is you have to give them the opportunity to do that. And at the next meeting, they went back and, you know, he, you know, apologized and, you know, set up some time. We made sure that we got notice back to the neighborhood that we weren't going to close the hearing. We were going to keep it open so that we could hear those things. And, but it was all done offline. It wasn't done, you know, stop, that type of thing. I have a chairman of the water commission in town who can sometimes just only do the things the way that he wants to do them, just because that's what he does in his business. And sometimes I have to, you know, pull him aside and talk to him offline and say, you know, you can't do those types of things. You have to follow this process. And it's not that he's doing anything illegal, it's just that he's being too authoritarian with what needs to be done. And when their neighbor's there, you need to incorporate their view. You don't have to adopt it, but you have to at least respect them and incorporate them into the process as well as all the other commission members. And sometimes he doesn't get along with one of his commission members, so I have to talk to him offline on that too.
Thank you.
But having said that, he respects me because I'm willing to talk to him offline about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Okay, Mike, before we end tonight's discussion, have we covered everything you consider relevant? Is there anything important about yourself that you would like to add? Or is there anything about the position that you'd like explained?
Sure. You know, again, I'd like you to take a look at the material that I passed out. We quickly skimmed over that, but I think it gives you a good summary of, you know, some of the major accomplishments and at least how I approach this position. We've got everything set up for Thursday for your tours of public safety and meeting with all the department heads. Having said all that, is I do have a few questions for you collectively. And let me start with, is, you know, you've asked me a lot of questions about what I do, this, that, and the other thing. My question is collectively as the board, as all five members of the board. And I know two can't sit here and participate in this. So to some extent, you guys have a little authority to tell me what they want.
Here in spirit.
Yes. But what are the top two or three things that you want the town administrator to do? And I'm going to give you the follow-up question to that too. Is how are you going to evaluate me or whoever's in this position on meeting those objectives and expectations?
Good question. Now you're reversing it back on us.
Well, you've asked me all the questions.
Well, primarily, I mean, the question I asked about having a fractured board and, you know, remaining neutral, you know? The way I'd evaluate it is, you know, how you approach that and how you get us on the same page so that all of us have similar type of information. So say I came here and had to do some research and bring up some information. I wouldn't want you to keep that just between you and I. I want you to share it with the rest of the board. I want to have a more openness and transparency on the board, and you might be the one that can help trigger that. You know, maybe it really is a responsibility of us as elected officials to kind of grow up a little bit and act like adults. But, you know, I'm looking for some sort of solution coming from your position and, you know, where it fills our position. I think that we need to be more civil with each other. Let me give you an example. My father was the first Democrat elected in the history of Plymouth County in nineteen sixty-four. He was a school teacher. He taught school all day long. The county commissioners met every day, I mean, every Tuesday at ten o'clock in the morning. Now, he couldn't make that. It was him and two Republicans. They changed that till four o'clock in the afternoon. You would never see that type of agreement the way this board is acting right now. That's what I want to get to.
From my perspective, finances are very important and I can't, we can't speak for one another. I mean, because I really don't know, you know.
Yeah.
We know, we all know what the major issues are in town. The school, obviously, the North Carver Water District is a big concern of mine. But overall, the big concern, period, for me is the finances. And for somebody willing to come in, stay neutral, and not be afraid to say, look, hey, guys, this is what we need to do to be able to move forward in the future. And in terms of how would we rate you? I personally have been a strong advocate of performance appraisals since the, while I was campaigning. You know, why people aren't held accountable. And that is another, something that I would seek in a town administrator is finding out, being able to put a plan together to hold department heads accountable in terms of efficiencies, you know, cost reductions within the different departments, et cetera. So I would propose, and I'm sure that everybody would support it, is to have a performance appraisal by setting goals and objectives for you when you first come on board. And then, you know, after a designated period of time, we would look at those goals and objectives and determine if you are meeting them at that point.
We do have an evaluation process that we've used for our town administrator. But I think it needs to be updated.
And we didn't do it too often.
But my concern would be for, to see you come in and evaluate areas that you felt we needed to improve. And so I would be waiting to see, after you got your feet on the ground and saw what is happening in town and your experiences, and suggest areas that we can work on and improve. And I hope that would be the way you would think. So I really kind of simplify it from that point of view. I want to see some things happen that we should be doing that we haven't been. I'd like to see some improvements, but I would like to see you come up with an evaluation as to what you thought we needed to work on in town. So it would be a give and take thing. As far as staying neutral, that's what I want. You stay neutral. I think we can solve the differences that we've had. I don't know, as I categorize them quite as bad as Jack, but I don't think he, his relationship and mine is not to the point where he's referred to. You know, the three of us are working on the most important process that we will do this year is hire our new administrator. And so we are having, we are working together quite well on that. Our screening committee came up with what I consider four good candidates, excellent candidates. I'm listening to you, gentlemen, and it's going to be a very difficult process to find, to figure out who is the best fit for our town. But we're working hard on that, the three of us. So that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, we are working very well together. Dick and I have been, we've visited two communities already. We have the assistance of the police chief and emergency management director. And, you know, they're happy to be involved in the process. And we're going to put a report together and get emailed out so Helen can share it because she has to work in Boston, so.
Darn work.
Next question.
Someone has to work.
Yeah, and I think there's sort of a follow-up to Dick's question is, has the board considered, or would you consider, putting together a governance committee to assist the town administrator in putting together some proposals for potential reform? And the reason why I say that is that, as we talked about volunteers, it's real easy for me to come in and say, here, I've had great success with X, Y, and Z. We should do X, Y, and Z. However, if that's done in a committee format and we start discussing these things, we still may, everyone may agree with X, they may agree with Y. But Z, they may say, well, you got to do Z this way because of some idiosyncrasy that we have in Carver that's going to make that work a little bit better. And I guess that that's part of the relationship building. Is that I don't think, I do it, but I don't think that you would want me to come in and, you know, put out the list of things that need to be done. I think you've done a lot of research. I think you've done a lot of research and there's other groups that have come in with some suggestions, whether it's DOR, whether it's your auditors. Um, you know, we can always come back and have another review done. Um, and, and I will certainly, again, more than willing to off, I'm not shy. I'm more than willing to offer my suggestions, but I think from a community standpoint, we need to get others invested in whatever change is. Because as a rule, I still don't, I don't find a lot of people that like change. Unfortunately, we have to do some change. And the more people that get involved in the buy-in and the creation of that change, the more successful the transition is. And, and I guess that's, that's, um, a question, you know, back to, to the board. Is that something that you'd be willing to, to consider?
I, I like the idea of the governance committee. The last time that we had something similar to that was when we, um, suggested, you know, creating a position of town administrator and that happened eighteen, nineteen years ago. But I, I've always been an advocate of having a charter. I don't know if you have a charter in Cohasset, but I think starting the framework of putting a charter together can give you the guidance that you need in all these areas. So I don't know if you meant by the governance committee. I know the start to pull together some of these changes and have the policies and stuff, you know. For a while there, we followed, uh, the DOR report, but it was very specific, headed to certain things. And then it was dropped. There's a lot of other suggestions on that that should be followed through and maybe that's what that governance committee can be. So I like the idea of doing something like that.
Yeah, I would suggest that that be done in a two-step process. Is that a charter commission is a very extensive process and it takes a long time
That's right.
to get an output out of that. However, since you haven't had a governance committee in seventeen years, since you created the Town Manager Act and we were operating under Microsoft DOS at the time. And we didn't have hybrid cars and we didn't have some of the software we have for efficiencies in, in, in the town. Um, and, and the financial rules and regulations were different at that time. That there's an opportunity for having an appointed governance committee to really deal with, if you will, those low hanging fruits. What are the things that everyone knows needs to be changed or improved, but just hasn't happened yet? And, and those are the things you tackle first to get some consensus building with those. And then after you get those and have some efficiencies and successes with that, then say, okay, now let's take this to the next step. Do we want to continue what we've just done? Or do we want to elevate it to a full-blown charter commission and, and, and then go down that road?
Well, and I, I think that, you know, we, we had the makings of it and it got all caught up in the politics of the board and that was the audit committee. The audit committee, when they first did it, they wanted it to implement the changes from the, uh, DOR report. And I think we do need an audit committee, but I think we need to go over and start the process all over again because all of us have different opinions on it. So whoever we bring in as a town administrator could probably take the lead role in there and helping us put peoples from both ends of the factions on it with the idea that, you know, we're going to work together. It's not going to be, we're going to go in and have fisticuffs every time we have a meeting and it's going to be that we're doing it for the improvement of the town. And that could be the first step towards going forward in a governance committee. I don't know how you feel. I don't know how you two feel about something like that, but I think we need to start that process over with and move forward with it.
Um, a governance committee would be an all encompassing committee to look at all levels of our municipal government.
Sure. You'd probably want to get somewhere between five and nine people
Yeah.
that have, um, knowledge in different areas, not necessarily vested interests, but knowledge of different areas.
Yeah.
So that you can get people from all different segments.
I would want to see in that process a diverse committee.
Yes. It has to be diverse.
I, I don't want to see one side politically all and then
And that's what I was referring to.
A diverse, yes. I'd, I'd be very much in favor of that because I figured, as you've described it, you don't want to identify all the things that you might feel need, uh, changes or improvements. But if it comes from the community or the governance committee, who are the citizens that might, it's going to
And we have, we have some good documents.
I, I would agree, sure.
We have good documents to deal with, I think.
We've got to be cognizant of time.
Oh, yeah.
And just to follow up on that, I'll be real quick, is that
We don't want to give you more time than the other.
Sure. And I don't want to take more time, just to be fair to everybody. Is that, um, with creating that, that committee, a diverse committee, is that that's where I am able to facilitate and bring in my experience and kind of guide or help people understand certain things that need to be harder looked at. So that there would be that involvement, so that the end product coming out of the diverse committee, plus myself if selected, you know, would have the more community buy-in. So with that, thank you all for this evening.
Thank you very much. You know, you're one of four finalists and, uh, we had a great group of you. So, uh, it's going to be a tough decision for us to make next week, but we have one more, uh, candidate that we're going to interview tonight.
You're very fortunate to, to have four people to choose from.
Yeah, so.
Yes, we are.
You have a tough role.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From two thousand one to two thousand eleven is town administrator in Rehoboth. Previously, he practiced law. Mr. Marciallo has a BA from UMass Boston and a JD from the Massachusetts School of Law. He also served as a military policeman. So, um, Dave, uh, please tell us about yourself, your reasons for seeking the position of Carver Town Administrator and how your experience and training qualifies you to help Carver meet the challenges described in the profile.
First of all, thank you, uh, for having me here. My name is David Marciallo. As you've said, I am an attorney. I was an attorney prior to being a town administrator. Um, I have seventeen years as an attorney and ten years as a town administrator. Um, my focus of law has been municipal employment, land use. Um, basically I came from the other side of the aisle and then, uh, had, uh, a change in life where I went to the municipal side of the aisle. Um, back on the other side of the aisle, trying to get back on the other side of the aisle. Um, it's been my life goal, um, to be in this form of, of employment. It's nothing that, um, let, let me strike that and, and start off. I think I separate myself from ninety-five percent of the people in my profession. And dare I say, all the other candidates in one regard. I'm not running from anything or to anything. If you look at my resume as opposed to other candidates' resumes and other people in my profession, they're two years in one position and then they're, they jump to another position and then three years and then they move to another town. And they just keep moving and moving and jumping and jumping. And, and you can see connecting the dots, what they're doing. They're padding their resume to get to something, whether it's a retirement or a higher salary or whatever it is. You look at my resume and my background, this is where I am. This is what I want to do. I went someplace. I stayed there ten years. I would have remained there ten years. Would remain there another twenty years. Being in this line of work, it's inevitable that you eventually get the phone call or the tap on the shoulder or called into a meeting that says, you know, the board has changed and, uh, we've decided that we're going to go in a different direction. Thank you for your work. But it's, it's time to move on. And that happens to everyone in this position. And I'm no different in that. But what is different with me is I'm still trying to get back there. And I'm not trying to take a job somewhere where I'll be there a year or two or three and move on. I'm very fortunate in my life's position that I can pick and choose. I'm an attorney. I'm doing well. My wife has a fantastic job. We have healthcare. We're financially stable. I could continue doing what I'm doing and be completely financially stable. But what I'm doing is I'm earmarking particular types of jobs that I'm looking for. And Carver fits the bill. I've chosen Carver. I'm not throwing spaghetti against the wall and applying here, there, and everywhere. I chose Carver because I want Carver for specific personal and professional reasons. As, um, the two selectmen who visited my town saw, my town and your town could be considered sister towns. I worked ten years basically doing what I would be doing in Carver. The political structure is the same. The financial structure is the same. The citizenry is the same. The, the makeup of the towns are the same. They're, they're both forty-five miles outside of Boston. They both have two major thoroughfares, fifty-eight and forty-four. We have forty-four and Route Six. They both have elected boards and, um, appointed boards. They both have, uh, town administration, a former government, open town meeting. They both have the, the same issues that every other town has with apathy and hard, uh, hard to come up with money and but what's unique is I've done it and I liked it and I want to find it again. And I think I've found it. And that's why I've chosen Carver. That's why vis-à-vis, I believe I'm a good fit for Carver. So, thank you.
Helen is the first question.
Yes, I do. Dave, being as specific as possible, um, what do you see as the three most significant issues facing Carver in the next few years and how do you pro, propose to address these issues?
Fantastic question and I'll digress for a millisecond to say, I'm not qualified, being in my status right now, to know what is the major issues for Carver. And I would be naive to think that I'm qualified to know. I could speculate and I will speculate and I can tell you from what I know based on my amount of dealings with Carver. However, there's always an answer behind the number that you would not even know until you got into it. In particular, an example, the police chief may have an overtime budget of fifty-five thousand dollars over from last year. And when you look at that on its face, I could knee-jerk reaction and say, oh, well, look, overtime needs to be cut. Well, that would be naive to say until I got to the bottom of it. Maybe there's a reason why overtime is so over the top. There might be someone on forty-one, one eleven F. There might be a stakeout that you're doing. There, there could be reasons. So that as a background, I can say that Carver is at a crossroads. You've got an agricultural backbone and the market is changing. You're going to have to plan for smart growth. And that should be in your master plan. You should review your master plan. You should implement these changes. You should be trying to bring in outside revenues without changing the magnificent character that this town has. And that can be done. It, it's a collaborative effort, but it can be done. It's not going to be, you can't take a snapshot today and look twelve years from now and see the exact same thing. Just like if you look at a snapshot from nineteen seventy-three, it's not the same thing. Carver is different. But the thing you can do is project what that snapshot will look like and move toward that. That is smart growth. You're going to have to change, but change on your terms. Change the way you want to with mixed use, with forty Bs, forty Rs, forty Qs, with revenue streams that, that are, um, I, I would, I hate the term, but outside the box. For instance, as, uh, two of the selectmen have heard me say already, I rezoned for Hoboth and I brought cell towers onto town land instead of allowing them just willy-nilly on public land, uh, excuse me, private land. And by doing that, I was able to dictate where these cell towers would go. I was able to dictate how they would be built. I was able to dictate what they would look like and how they would be intrusive behind other trees, meander the roadways. But most importantly, I was able to dictate who gets the money. Each cell tower, on average, gets a rent of about five thousand dollars for the tower and gets a co-location fee of two to five thousand dollars depending on where you are on the pole. And you can get upwards of six or more on a pole. So each cell tower can generate thirty-plus thousand dollars per month. And you don't educate it. You don't put out fires on it. You don't plow it. You don't police it. You don't do anything to it except collect the revenues. That's one way. Another thing specifically, generating revenues often means not spending money. By not spending money and by saving money, you're generating revenues. You can change the way you do business in that get grants and put solar voltaic on. That's going to reduce your, your electric bill at, at a particular building. It's also potentially going to bring in revenues. I've done that. I've brought in major solar voltaic, two different units. One was a hundred and forty-one thousand. One was a hundred and fifty-three thousand. They generate well over a million dollars. There are other things you can do along those lines. Put more money into the reserve fund, whether it seems practical or not. Because when you have more money in your reserve fund, you generate money because you earn interest and your bond rating goes down. Your, your interest rates, pardon me, go down. Your bond rating goes up, your interest rates go down. So when you go to buy a police cruiser and you normally would get a four percent note on it, now you're getting a two percent note. That's money in your bank. That's money in your pocket. So I, I could go on and on and on and on, but we have a limited amount of time. And if you have follow-ups, if you'd like me to continue, I would, but in, in short, look at things differently. And if you look at my resume, I have, no solution is a hundred percent and no problem is unsolvable. It's always a combination of all the tools in your, in your toolbox and you just piece it together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? So Helen, you have it again.
I have it again.
Another question from Helen.
Another question from Helen. We continue to witness prolonged slow economic growth. Uh, Carver's unfunded liability continues to grow. And we are in a great need for a school, fire, police station, other infrastructure, uh, rehabs. Have you had, um, experience to design, direct, or oversee reduction of expenses or consolidation of departments due to circumstances such as the above that I mentioned? And if so, can you describe your role, um, the process you utilized, the degree of success it had? And if it, if it wasn't successful, or if you think it, you know, it didn't go as planned, what did you learn from it?
I heard multiple steps, steps in that question. And I'll try to address them all. If I've, if I gloss over one, please direct me back. I heard the Gatsby forty-five jumping right out at me. That's the unfunded mandates going forward. That's the, the OBR stuff. It's a mandate that every community is going to have to do. And this community is not unlike any other community where they are unfunded. I can tell you that the, the new people in the system are fairly funded accurately because they're paying a very high percentage of their retirement already. The people that are getting closer to retirement, they're very underfunded. So we have to make, um, make do to bring that up. The first thing you have to do is you have to see what are those percentages? Like all the people that just started right now, they're, they're okay. Because they're kicking in a percentage that's gonna pay for themselves. The people that came in six, seven years ago are probably okay. But the people that are in twenty-two years and they got three more years, the amount of contribution is not going to pay for the amount of kickback to them. You have to get with the experts. And I can't say that a lawyer who does municipal law is an expert in financial planning. But there are experts in financial planning and there are resources that the state gives you to deal with this. You can go to the Department of Revenue. You can go to the Division of Local Services. You can bring in your, your tax auditors. You can bring in, um, the Secretary of State and the Attorney General. They are there to help. And start just like a master plan for the, for the, um, the, the outlook of the town. You set a master plan for the outlook of your liabilities. You know, every EF Hutton-type person does this. That's what they do. They project, when you walk into their office and you say, I'm forty-six years old, I wanna retire when I'm seventy, I wanna retire at this level, they then say, okay, this is your plan. You know, you see that on TV, that little green line you're supposed to follow. There are professionals that do it. You do an RFP and you bring those professionals in and you make your plan and you fund it. I- it's not something you can avoid, it's something you have to take on by the horns and it's not something that I'm afraid to do. Um, some of the other questions that you raised were in the downturn. Yes, I started in oh-one, I went to eleven. There was a, a period of time when life was peachy and then a period of time when i- it felt like a punch in the gut every time you turned around. We had to have services stay level because that's what we do, but we had to do more with less. And we did do it. I was more of a, let me, let me back up. One of the things that I, uh, I, I put forth and really trumpeted was regionalization where you can and run away from it where it hurts you because sometimes it just doesn't help. Sometimes it actually is a detriment to the town. I was able to bring our electric bill in with other towns, other districts, other communities and other businesses. And we made one big pot of electrical usage and we went out and we bid it. And not only did we bid it, we bid it multiple times until it finally hit where we wanted it. We didn't accept the very first one or the second or the third. We kept rebidding it, watching the market and we did this as a turnkey operation. We paid zero dollars to do this. I hired a company that basically said, we will take one percent of the savings that you get. So, it was in their benefit to get us the best deal they could. I never wrote them a check. We went from fourteen point five cents a kilowatt to four cents a kilowatt. It was outrageously cheap. We had a three-year, um, contract for four cents a kilowatt. And the next time it came around, it was in our best interest to diverse, diversify and kinda split off from some of the other ones because we didn't match up well with, with their portfolio. And we went and basically got like a seven and a half cent. It was more expensive, but it was still half of what the rest of the market was doing. Likewise, I looked at other initiatives where we had share agreements with towns. I got equipment for free from surplus federal, surplus state, surplus county. We're talking Humvees for the police force, we're talking plow trucks, you know, big, huge plow trucks for the, um, for, for the, uh, DPW. We're talking generators, w- we're talking huge amounts of equipment, zero dollars. Where one of these share agreements did not work and I learned from it, I learned it is not always best to get the cheapest price when a commodity is necessary. We went in on a salt bid with multiple towns and got an unbelievable bid. The problem with it was during a storm and the salts coming down the road, they keep delivering over here and they don't make it up the road to me. You know, three, three here, because they can make more profit by doing five drops here and then one drop there. So, we saw that and we realized very quickly, this isn't gonna work. In mid-season, we went out on our own. And we just realized after the, the second storm, thank God they weren't horrible blizzards, this is not gonna work, we need to go out and readjust this. So, sometimes these share agreements are wonderful and sometimes they just don't work. I apologize, but I know you had other subparts to the, um, to the question, if you could remind me.
I think you, um, hit on it. It's basically, the second part was if you did have an opportunity to have to design a process to consolidate.
Yes, it, it, it came up frequently.
What was your, what was your specific role in the process you utilized to get it done?
It, it came up often. And my process pretty much doesn't deviate from my process in many realm, m- much of what the town administration does. As the, these two selectmen heard, um, I tend to bring the group together. I tend to get everyone involved, make sure that we have all of the information from all of the people and then delegate because the experts in the field, if you give them the, um, charge to do it, you give them the equipment a- and necessary, um, support and then leave them alone to do their job, but the buck stops here. Make sure that there's accountability in one such way as after-action report. I was in the military, I love after-action reports. And that can be so simple as if I say to my secretary, did you call the printer? Blessing after-action report, I'm following up, simple conversation. Yes, I called the printer. Okay, I'm done. I, I didn't have to get in deep. It could be far more inept, uh, uh, in-depth, pardon me, where we meet with, um, perhaps the, um, superintendent of streets about a bridge that we're rebuilding, where we have to have meetings every week to make sure that you're on task. So, my way of doing it is we hit the ground running, get the committee together, could be an ad hoc committee, get everyone on board, make our agenda and our goal. My position then is keep everyone on task and let them do their job and make sure they're on task because there's accountability. It happened frequently with everyday matters and major problems where dams burst, major problems where there was, uh, changes in the numbers from the state where we're expecting X and we get Y and we have to... Uh, one thing comes to mind, we had a major flood. All of the roads in a certain area were now not passable. And they weren't going to be passable for quite a while because it did major damage. We had to muster the EMS, we had to muster the school department. We had to muster the federal, state, and local highway people, FEMA people. We had to muster police, fire, get them all, and congressmen, uh, federal congressmen, state legislature, get them all in a room, get the whiteboard out. The superintendent of schools needed to be there because she's gonna have to get her students to school and she can't go down these twelve roads for quite a while. How are we gonna do it? Come up with a plan, initiate the plan, and then put it into place. That's how I do my work and that just flows through with everything. And we did it multiple times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? I'm good. Okay, so, you did two already, right?
Your honor.
Now it's me. Uh, Carver is rich in natural resources and well-known for its strong agricultural base. How would you create a balance between preserving the agricultural history and the need for economic development? And then I'll have a follow-up question after that.
That question, Mr. Franny, um, it, it resonates with what I had to do pretty much o- on a consistent basis in Rehoboth. What we did, and I can't say it would fit, um, you know, because no one fit is a fit for everyone. But what we did is we looked at opportunities to maintain as much of the character as we could, maintain as much of the structure as we could, but increase the revenues at the same time. And we did that through agreements with the state where the state actually bought the rights to farm, um, into perpetuity. They actually paid farmers money to keep it a farm. And that funded these farms going forward to help them modernize. They could take that money and it wasn't just a profit in their pocket. They took that money and they, they bought irrigation systems and they bought marketing systems and they bought, you know, crop systems and milking systems. And that helped them, you know, stay ahead of the curve and make them profitable. That was one way that we, we did it. There are grants with the USDA that we sought after. My job in government isn't to be in business for them. My job in government is to not be obstructionist and to help them. And that's what we do. We make a system that is very friendly to their side of the, of the fence and let them, the experts, do what they have to do and bring them solutions that they can choose or not choose. Because it's their business model, not mine. It, it's their livelihood, not mine. And some of these people decide to sell light. They, they go and put, you know, solar voltaic on their fields because they're now gonna grow light. And that's still farming to them and they're still making money. And some of them decided to, uh, one of them decided to make a, a county fair, bring it back. We had a Rehoboth Fair for, for decades. For generations, we had a Rehoboth Fair. And in the seventies, it ended. Well, one of these farmers went and looked and said, I wanna bring it back. And he went and he got a grant and he rebuilt the Rehoboth Fair. It's not to the level that it once was, but every year it's growing and it's growing and it's bringing revenues into his farm to fund his farm activities going forward. These are the type of things that the town, myself included, can do. And it's back to the point I made earlier with, um, uh, Selectman Marone. My job is to facilitate, to bring the information and the resources to the people and everyone to the table and not be obstructionist, but be helpful. And that's what I would do.
Okay, uh, my follow-up was, uh, cranberry prices have remained low for many years and we could be experiencing the advent of the demise of cranberry farming in the region due to competition, similar to the shoe industry and dairy farming declines. How would you approach land issues to prevent overdevelopment from farmers having to sell off their property and survive?
Well, the manner in which you couched that question is you said they had to sell out.
If they had to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because if the assumption is that they're going to, if that's the assumption, they're going to sell out and I'll take that on its face, smart growth is where it's at. You could rezon the area to allow for mixed use, to allow for, um, walking areas of small, um, small commercial developments, um, a- and, you know, uh, maybe some apartments above them, um, have walking areas. So, you can dictate how the growth is and it's not sprawl. You, 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 I, I'm assuming that the town doesn't want sprawl. You'd have to look at your master plan, you'd have to come up with what it is that your direction was. And one such, uh, option is smart growth options with transportation and, and, and combined use areas. Um, but that's assuming that they are going to sell.
Mm-hmm.
W- we, we can take the position that, no, we, we can maybe help them not sell. And that's just as viable an option. And if it's just as viable an option, um, I can tell you that as nonsensical as it sounds, buying open space saves the town money. Because if you were to have a large tract of land that gets developed and it gets developed with houses, each house brings in multiple students. Multiple students brings in multiple costs. Now, you have to educate, you have to, you know, police, you have to fire, you have to ambulance. That development, you have to plow it, you have to maintain the, the drains. As a general rule, if you look at the models, one house might bring in eight or nine thousand dollars with the revenue. Sounds great. One student costs you twelve. So, if there's one student in that house, you're negative two thousand before you've plowed it, before you've, uh, you know, put in a sidewalk. You have a second student, you're really behind. So, the object can be, if the town so desires, start planning with your CPA money to actually protect those lands. And you can use them for your purposes, whether it be a park, whether it be open space, whether it be future development for the town or recreation or whatever. But that's one more tool. And I, as I said, not every tool i- i- is the magic bullet, it's just not. You have this humongous toolbox with all these tools and you just keep reaching in there and looking to see which one turns the nut. And that's another one. So, I, I, I've given you two examples. Another example is what I said we did in Rehoboth. We went out and we looked for opportunities through the CPA. We actually used our CPA money to help these farmers get the, um, the, the guarantees that their land will stay into perpetuity. It was, I think, three hundred years, I think it was. I don't believe it was perpetuity, I think it was three hundred years that the land would stay a farm. And for that, they got tax breaks and they got grant money and they got all these other things. It was a, a charitistic approach. You can't sell your land to a developer for three hundred years. You can lease it, but you can sell it, but it has to stay sixty-one A, B, or C. And we helped them find that. These things are moving targets. There's never the same thing every year. The USDA grants change, the state has money. S- some real, uh, affluent person decides to, to fund something for farming of fish or whatever. You grab what's out there and you just keep turning it over until you can find it. You just have to be ready, willing, and able and looking for it. So, again, I, I go back to the, the same theme. My job is to facilitate and help and bring all this to them and help them with it. But I can't make their model. All I can do is potentially rezon, but I can't make their business model.
Okay, any follow-up questions? Dick, you're next.
Okay, Dave. Um, in this period of economic downturn, which we're still in, declining local aid and revenues from the state, what steps should the town of Carver take to provide consistent levels of service? What would you be talking that we would be doing?
Um, that's a reality that every town administrator has faced and will continue to face. You always want to be prepared where you can be and don't go through life with blinders on. What I mean by that is you initially start out your analysis ultra-conservatively, ultra-ultra-conservatively, so that you can get through the year in hopes that you have extra at the end. And that extra at the end is really where you're going to kinda make headway. The ultra-conservative with start at the bottom, zero, fund every single line. You start with zero and you say to the department head, your budget is a goose egg. Build it up from there. You start out with, what do you need, all the way up the ladder until you get to some number that I have provided you, arguably what you spent last year. Once you get there, you're done. The number might be below that. Then you start providing me from the bottom up the most important want that you have. You want a new copy machine, you want a new, you know, two hours of work for this secretary and you build it up from there. That way, you know that you are already balanced. Your budget is covered. And any cuts you can start making from the top down, from the least important to the most important, so you know going forward it's balanced. At the end of the day, when you have some extra free cash, when maybe you get some more money from the state, that's when you can really backfill a lot of those needs. And never, never... And never, never, never is that operational. That is capital. Operational is dire. If you had to do it one time to prevent some travesty, we can talk about it. But all of that extra free money, you buy cash money, you fix your roof, you, you paint your building, you re-tar the driveway, you buy your police cruisers, you buy all your equipment, your computer equipment. And then you put the rest of that into your stabilization and you've, and you potentially have a capital stabilization one going forward with a five-year plan. That is how you prepare for the inevitable that is gonna happen, but you can't predict. So you have covered what you can, what you can control. You've planned for what's bound to come down the pike. And again, it goes back to the same topic as before. By having that position, your bond rating goes up, your interest rates go down, and you actually do have money available to you. Also, there are tools that are available to this board in the months of May and June and the first two weeks of July, where if you had a really mild winter and you budgeted all this money for oil and you only spent that much, you've got a chunk of money. And it's, the, the numbers change every year, but the last time, I think it was five percent or five thousand dollars, whichever was more. And that number changes, so you look at the statute. That money is money that you have already got in your wallet. If you look over here and see that, you know what, we've got all this extra money in the oil line and it's now June tenth. We're not gonna be heating the bills on June tenth, but we've got eleven thousand dollars. You look over there and you say, uh, you know, we need a new lawn tractor. That's not any tax dollars that you need to raise. That's not any new appropriation that you need to go. That is a good way to save money. Instead of going back to the till next year, say, we need that tractor, we, it's on our plan. It's been set, set there for three years. We now have the eleven thousand dollars, let's buy our tractor. So those are types of tools. Again, your toolbox is vast. You just have to know when to use it and that no one tool is perfect. It's a collaboration, it's a discussion with the board. I would recommend, you folks would vote.
Uh, any follow-up questions?
Um, nope, none of that one.
Helen, you're the next question.
Okay. Uh, Dave in Carver, some of the department heads report directly to the Board of Selectmen through the town administrator. Some report to elected boards and some are, um, elected directly by the citizens. How do you manage, motivate, and ensure that the department heads are fully accountable for the services they deliver in this complex structure? And how would you manage the relationships with elected boards and appointed committees?
Um, once again, you've given me a question that's one hundred percent in my wheelhouse. Because that is exactly what the scenario was and still is in Rehoboth. And what, um, Mr. Franny and Mr. Ward heard when they came. Initially, my very first, uh, days on the job, it was a very contentious, uh, situation where boards ha- had entrenched themselves and they weren't moving. And my very first charge from my Board of Selectmen was, you need to bridge these gaps. We're getting nowhere and it's been this way. Three administrators prior to me, very short terms, um, you know, two years, one year, two years, they couldn't bridge that gap. I made it ten years. And the reason I made it ten years was because I could and I did bridge those gaps. And I'm the only person who ever made ten years in the history of Rehoboth. So that being said, people I find will give you what you want when they understand what it is you want and how it is they can give it to you. And they know that they're part of the solution. People feel very disenfranchised. This is true with citizens on boards and why they're, they don't wanna serve on boards. Because historically, people in my position take a high road. You know, I'll be the chairman of this board and I'm gonna run this board and you all will do my bidding. I- i- it's not like that. This is a collaboration. This is, this is a town. And you know what? The, the elected official was elected for a reason. And the elected official deserves respect. And the elected official has just as much motivation to get to that goal as you. Might be coming from a different angle, but the goal is the same. I'm an attorney and I deal with this every single day. Compromise, collaborate, meet in the middle, find common ground, define the objective, and let's move toward it. Because you may not have the perfect solution, although you think you do. I may not have the perfect solution, although I think I do. Let's leave our egos at the, at the door and let's meet in the middle. And it's something as simple as, I would not do it in this room. As simple as that's, as, as that seems. Because now I'm sitting from a position of, of authority. You're already coming to the meeting wi- with your haunches up thinking, oh, this is gonna be a fight. I might come to your room. I might meet you in your office. Or we would at least, at a minimum, go to a neutral site. And we would not sit, you know, on a long table. You know, the Knights of the Round Table will round for a reason. We'll get all the chairs and we'll make a little semi-circle. We'll get some donuts in the corner and we'll talk about it. And this sounds silly, but let me remind you of something you probably know and never remembered. Ronald Reagan and Tip O'Neill did this every single week. They called it their beer chats. They met, they had beer, and they talked about, how can we meet in the middle? We're talking about two people that initially were on complete opposites of the world. You'd never think they'd become best friends. Not only did they become best friends, they became allies. And because of that, they moved the country forward. There's a lesson there. And it can start really simple with small committees, ad hoc committees. I'll be on a bunch of them. I won't chair many of them. I'll be on them, I'll help them, I'll guide them, I'll give them all of their, their resources. But I want them to own it. I want them grassroots-wise to be involved in it. So it's their baby and they want to move forward. I, I don't need the, the fanfare. I need the result.
Thank you.
And that's how I did do it and that's how I will do it.
Thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions?
My follow-up is, uh, the next question. So I'll let Jack go.
Yeah. Can you give us an example of how you remain detached from the political process within the town and remain neutral and work in towards the best interest of the citizens, even when the citizens themselves are divided? And I have a follow-up to that.
I prescribe to, um, prescribe and also subscribe to the ICMA, their tenants, the MMA, their tenants. I, I, I believe they're, they're very sound judgment rules. I don't have a dog in the fight, nor do I want to have a dog in the fight. I'm a lawyer. And as a very crass example, I can recommend to OJ Simpson not to take the stand because it's not in his best interest. But if he is adamant that he's going to take the stand, my job is to zealously defend his position. I, I don't need to agree with his position. I don't need to like his position. But for his best interest, that's my job. And I have no problem with that. That makes me very unique. I have no problem in putting forth what is in the best interest of the town at all times. As just a matter of, this is my job, this is what the town needs for various reasons. But that's not to say empathy doesn't come into it. Because every single day, there are reasons behind the numbers. But again, I have no dog in the fight. I, I have no political agenda. I'm not looking to be here for three years and then move on to somewhere else for a twelve percent raise. I'm looking to be here and make sure that I grow with this town. I'm involved with this town. You will see me do all the things I did in Rehoboth and more. You will see me be part of these ad hoc positions. And you will see me do exactly what you said, Mr. Franny. That's exactly the most important part of it. To digress a little bit on that, you'll see me start running, um, community gardens like I did for the benefit of the food bank. Bringing in a circus. And I remembered which circuses, they were Vid Bell and Kelly Miller. Two excellent circuses. Bring the circuses in because, A, it was fun for the kids. It was community buildup and everyone talked about it and we had contests where you could win rides on the elephants. But in the end, it brought money into the PTSA, the Parent Teacher Student Association. Bring in the students to do, um, uh, mapping of our GPS. Why? Because then they own it. And when they own it, they feel a part of it. When they feel a part of it, it builds more. And then people get involved. So thank you.
Okay, and the follow-up is, uh, this Board of Selectmen is fractured. It's two different factions on it. So, um, along the same lines, you know, how are you gonna remain neutral with two different factions on the board?
That is the hardest part of the job. And the part that I least like is also the reality of the job. It's something that I've, I had to do for ten years, um, and will continue to do. When the board was pro this side and one over here negative, that didn't make that person any less of a member. It just meant that person's vote was probably going to be negated, but didn't make that person any less of a member. That person is elected just like the rest. So how do I say neutral? My job is not to have a position of who's right or wrong. My job is to give you a report that is factually based, that is based on best management practices, that is based on information and numbers and charts and projections. And then I will give you my opinion as to what I think you should do. And I guarantee you, behind closed doors, my opinion will be zealously argued. I guarantee you that I will try to persuade you that my opinion is right. However, as soon as the door opens and we sit out here, my opinion is not important. Because you are going to vote. If you then ask me my opinion publicly, I will state it. If you don't ask me my opinion publicly, it'll never be heard. You already know what it is. It's in my report. I've told you what it was. You answer to the, to the citizens. The citizens vote you in, therefore you have to answer to your vote. The same exact scenario will be at town meeting. If I'm given the opportunity to stand up at town meeting, if I'm asked to describe something, to explain something, I will zealously, if, if my charge is just explain it, here are the pros, here are the cons, this is what happens if you do this, this is what happens if you do that. That was my charge. If my charge is, the Board of Selectmen wants this, try to convince them, okay? I'll get up and say, this is why we want this. The Board of Selectmen is adamant that this is a good thing for the town. I am not a town manager. I'm a town administrator and they are different. If in fact, the town becomes a town manager with a charter, that changes the whole ballgame. A town manager, he will, or she will differentiate himself from the board whenever he or she deems necessary for the betterment, betterment of the town. That is not the charge of the town administrator. Town administrator works at the beck and call of the Board of Selectmen. However, that being said, it is my duty to give you my opinion based on the facts as I know them. And leave it at that. You will vote.
Any follow-up questions? Dick, you're up. Last question.
Okay, uh, it's kind of, uh, on the line, Dave, of, uh, Helen's questions or discussion on department heads. It's, uh, Carver is blessed with many interested and capable citizens who are interested in serving on town committees. What is your experience working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is the town administrator's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the Board of Selectmen or other boards for a specific issue?
It's an excellent.
Kinda like, you, you've already alluded a little bit.
It's an excellent question.
I'd like to hear your demeanor on that.
It's an excellent question because it, it goes to the heart of who I am and how I look at the job. Historically, what we find is that citizens feel powerless. The vast majority do. There's a small group, you know who they are, the same people that are involved in everything and show up at town meeting and, and drive town meeting and drive the votes. And everyone else feels powerless. And there's many reasons for that. Some of it is that, um, and this is not a pejorative, this is not a mean slight. They're ignorant, they're uninformed, and they just don't know. And that's because they don't know how to find out. It's not easy for them normally, historically, to get the answers. In a world of Google, you would think you'd be able to get the answers. But it's not on Google. It's historical knowledge, it's in, it's, uh, knowledge that people in the town hall know. It's in a book over there and it's in a, i- and it's in a, a policy over there. So how do we change that? We start with the small ad hoc groups and get these people involved in what they hold dear. Everyone wants to change something or keep something. They do. They want to either have streetlights or never have streetlights. No one is, I don't care one way or the other. So you get these people involved in those types of groups and you let them be empowered to make policy decisions that are recommended to the Board of Selectmen. And this is how you get the, the, the pulse of what is important. The more people that are involved in these groups, the more information you get and you know how to guide your, your, your town. Now, in particular, what did I do? I started a cell tower committee. I didn't chair it, but I started one. Why? Because I knew we needed revenues. I knew that this was an opportunity to have revenues. I knew that if I said to Mrs. Smith, oh, we're gonna put a cell tower, she'd go, oh my God, my brand-new baby, you know, two months old, you're gonna fry her brain. Cause you're gonna get that immediately. So what do I do? I start opening up these discussions, having informal public hearings that, that nothing's voted on, just informal chat sessions, going to the PTSA meetings, going to the senior citizen meetings, going to the Cub Scout meetings, bringing everyone in to a, a comfortable climate. Once everyone starts feeling like they're being heard, most people don't feel like they're being heard. Once they get a sense that they feel like they're part of this discussion, they feel empowered to add more. It's kind of like the quiet shy boy or girl in the back of the classroom. He or she's not stupid. He just isn't willing to speak up cause he's afraid. You get these people to not be afraid, they've got some really good points and maybe concerns that you can immediately address and, and quell. Once you get past that, these groups grow. They take on lives of their own. They all of a sudden start becoming not just ad hoc groups, but officially sanctioned committees of the town. We have a cell tower committee. Now we're looking at, how can this turn into revenue? And we do that with that. We did that with, w- w- with, um, you heard Mr., um, Mr. Horton say, Revenue Generation Committee. We had some outlandishly crazy ideas on their face and when you looked at them after a time, like, you know what, that might just work. So we literally. So we literally just threw spaghetti against the wall for two, three weeks, every night, until we finally started honing down ways to bring in revenues. And you heard Mr., um, Mr. Horton say, one which just jumps out at you easily, look at the fees. Where do they sit? Where do they sit with other towns? And we hadn't looked at our fee schedule in like three years. And when we were looking at it, a building permit was twenty dollars. Who in the world charges twenty dollars for a building permit? You know, it just was outrageous. So just by adjusting it to a fair and reasonable fee, we brought in free cash for the next year. We had land that was being completely, buildings that were just abandoned. So why don't we look at selling them? Let's draw up some RFPs, let's go make a warrant article, see if the town wants to sell them. We're not gonna use them. They're rotting, you know, with, we're either heating them or maintaining them or something. And we can get two hundred thousand for that and three hundred thousand for that, what's five hundred thousand dollars? Okay. It's only one-time money, but that five hundred thousand dollars can build a wing, you know, on some building. So that's how you do it. You do it by how Barack Obama started his campaign. Door to door to door. How how Tip O'Neill started his campaign. And before him, how people in their thirties started their campaign. Door to door to door. You get people involved, and when they're involved, they feel empowered. When they're empowered, they add to the solution. I've done it and I will continue to do it.
All right, we don't have time for a, uh, follow-up question, 'cause we're running close on the time. So we got maybe, uh, four minutes. So I'd like to ask you, before we end tonight's discussion, have we covered everything you consider relevant? Is there anything important about yourself that you would like to add? Or is there anything about the position you'd like explained?
Um, I think the most important thing that I would request of the board is, first, a thank you that I think you already know this, and this is unique in in the process. Sitting in this hot seat is not natural. And there's just no way that I'm going to answer the questions perfectly. Nor will any of the other candidates. Uh, I'm not saying that, uh, I'm different than they are, that they're, they have the same problem. But what I do like about the process that you've done is you've gotten to know a little bit about each candidate and each system that they come from. That being the case, I I really hope that you look at why a candidate wants to be here, what the candidate will do when the candidate is is chosen, and how that fits into your overall goals. I can speak for myself, I am not a free agent. I come here because I chose Carver. It's very particular that I literally cherry-picked out of, I I did not apply at Foxborough. I did not apply at the town right next door to me in Seekonk. There, I did not apply in Cohasset. The these towns are all out there. Not going to apply there because they're not Carver. Carver is Carver. And when I come to Carver, I come because I want to be here, I wanna be part of the solution. I want to be here for a very long period of time. It's very comfortable. Money isn't important to me. Working every day in in a place where I feel I have accomplished something, where I feel I am wanted and needed and a part of the solution, that's important. And those are so easy to say, that is so easy to say. But go back and look at my record. When I took the job initially, I gave back more than fifty percent of my pay to take that job. I took a job that was dramatically less than what I was making, because it was a life choice. Over my ten-year at Rehoboth, I was under chapter one oh eight, uh, forty-one, one oh eight N. The second the ink dried on my contract, it was guaranteed, regardless of what town meeting did. If town meeting zeroed out the line, DLS would have taken it from free cash and paid me. That as a backdrop, I stood up at town meeting and I said, I need to give back money. Everyone hushed, they couldn't believe it. I need to give back money because if I don't, this budget will not be balanced. And we will be laying off that cop and that secretary. And A, we need that cop and we need that secretary. And B, I can't look at these police officers as I'm, you know, negotiating their contract and say, oh, there's not only a zero percent raise, but we're reducing you. However, I have a guaranteed contract that was signed last year, so I get a three percent raise. No. I gave back money. The next year, I gave back money again. The next year, I gave back money again. And for three years thereafter, I level-funded. Why? Because that's what was right. And that's what I bring to Carver. I will not look at this as a job. I look at this as a lifestyle. I've chosen my life to do this, and I want to do it here. I thank you for the opportunity.
Yep, thank you very much for, uh, coming here and, uh, we'll take, uh, a brief recess before we adjourn, so.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your sincere approach.
Thank you.
Back in session, uh, been a long night. Did four interviews, we're gonna make a decision next week at our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. So, uh, Dick and I are going to Avon tomorrow and we're gonna go to Cohasset on, uh, Thursday. And then we're gonna draft up a report, a little memo-type thing that we're gonna give to Elaine, our administrative assistant, and send it out to everyone, so Helen, you'll get a copy of our comments. I talked to Tom Walsh today and, um, he he said he'd send me his feelings and, uh, I'm sure the police chief will, and maybe we can incorporate that in and then maybe it'll help us make a difficult decision next week, so. I think we're all set for tonight. Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Motion made to adjourn by Dick Ward and seconded by Helen. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you.